Oh, four. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Sarah, do you have a flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for. Is in cell, sir?
Yes.
Thomas O'Brien?
Yes.
Matthew Buckley? Yeah, he's here. Matt?
He's muted. He's here.
Okay, that's okay. Michelle?
Here.
Yuquan, I saw is here. Barbara?
Yeah, here.
But, and Erin?
Here.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, a motion to accept the minutes of January 11th business meeting as presented. Motion, please. And second? Matt? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Stu, hold on one second.
Opposed? Sure.
Can you make sure everybody's muted? Because I hear somebody fighting with the kid in the background. And they keep on cutting Stu out. Good.
Sorry, it might have been the sick kid. I had the door open.
Oh, it was your kid's cutting you out?
My kid at six, like right over there, but the door is closed. Um, okay. A motion to accept the minutes. We, all in favor. Aye. Opposed? We're all good.
Stu? We need to do.
The agenda. Now the minute. We have to do the agenda. Sorry. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion. Erin, second. TJ, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're good.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mary. Trying to move it along. See that? I'm rushing. Okay. I guess we'll turn it over to Sarah.
What's happening? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I saw a thing today that said Zooms are nothing but modern day seances. When you would sit around and say, are you out there? Can you hear me? Okay, um, oh, it's somehow it's back up here. Sorry. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening and present to you. For the superintendent's report, I have two things. One is our budget presentation number two and the, and as well as principal reports. So we're going to start with principal reports. Mrs. Connolly, do you want to go first?
Sure. At the elementary school, we are wrapping up our winter benchmarking assessments and teachers will be meeting with the parents later this week to talk about student progress thus far. As you know, in this year, we limited our class sizes to 10 to 12 students to meet our COVID physical distancing requirements. And the smaller class sizes have turned out to offer the added benefit of allowing more time for one-to-one and small group work, which has really been helpful in meeting all of our students' individual learning needs. So we're, uh, we're really pleased with the results that we're seeing coming in from our recent assessments. And with the upcoming Valentine's Day holiday, our PBIS and guidance teams are collaborating, collaborating on a school-wide social emotional learning project. The teams created compliment conversation hearts for each of our students. And during a recent guidance lesson, students decorated their hearts and wrote compliments to their classmates on one side. And this activity linked to our unit on empathy and students enjoyed experiencing firsthand how it felt to give and receive positive messages about one another. So we're, we're happy to share the love at this upcoming holiday and looking forward to creating a school-wide collage display in the central hallway. And I will be posting that to Facebook once it's done.
At this time, I'd also like to take the opportunity to say thank you, Mrs. Connolly, for, and to the teachers for figuring out a way to do Valentine's cards for the students and to allow for that tradition to continue. I am well aware that not all districts are doing that. A lot of them have banned Valentine's cards being passed out. And I appreciate you and our staff finding a way to still allow students.
So thank you. Yep, we're happy to do so.
Mr. Globchik?
Yes, do you just?
I have it ready. If it's your first thing or if it's your second thing, I'm ready for what your second thing.
Well, that's, so we are just dovetailing off of what Diane said. We are really happy to have the breakfast on Friday. That is breakfast for all students. The cafe staff are making lovely notes that they're putting in each of the breakfast. And it's really just a nice bonding opportunity when, again, to Diane's point, you only have 10 to 12 students in a class. We're really fortunate to have Lisa Warren and the kitchen staff that we have to be able to do that and facilitate that for all of our learners. I guess about 500 across the district. So we're really excited about that. So in terms of graduation, which it's hard to believe that we're already starting to think about this. Thank you, Cheryl Proll. You can see the picture of her in front of the step and repeat from last year. We looked into the cost of graduation gowns this year. And because we, the reason why we're doing it so early is because we need to take the graduation photos. And always we book them around February of this year, except we use an old cap and gown that are lying around. And I had this, I was saying to Sarah, this 2:00 AM wake-up call that, wait a minute, we can't really do that because we can't have 54 students share the same cap and gown. So we want to order cap and gowns first. So we priced it out. Unfortunately, because of our timing, we are able to get it down from $26 to $18.50. So for our 54 learners, it would be $1,000 this year. The cost of the valedictorian and salutatorian stalls, they get a stall that says valedictorian, salutatorian. That's $15 each. And the cost of honors graduate souls, and that's for any student who has a 95 average or above, is $10. So one thought is to take these funds from the extra class activity fund through our eighth grade advisory. Currently, there's a balance of $3,456.40. So if we took this, these funds, we'd have, it would be $1,150 that would come from that. And we would still have a considerable balance, hopefully, for events that would come up later in the year if we are able to do any type of picnic or what events happen around graduation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Globchik. I appreciate your efforts on this and your, your 2 o'clock thinking. Shower thinking and 2:00 AM thinking is definitely the time of most of our aha moments.
So photo, they're actually, they'll be here in four to six weeks. And photos, we are already scheduled for mid-March. So we will work on doing that in a socially distant and safe way.
Excellent. Thank you very much. For our budget presentation this evening, I'm going to invite several of our staff members to help me present this. If I can have it up. No, I have to have it this part up and then I can do that. Hold on. I apologize. Okay, so for our second budget presentation of the year, we are discussing tonight enrollment and staffing update and talking about the tax levy limit compliance forms that we have to do. So Mrs. Lapre, Mrs. Polczynski, Mrs. Patrasi, and Mrs. LaRoe will all be participating in this discussion this evening. Mrs. Lapre, do you want to start?
Sure. Good evening. The first slide that we see here is our K through eight student enrollment. And we have the column for the in-district and out-of-district students. The number here that's representative, it's, well, we, we had 57 eighth graders last year leave. And we gained 29 kindergarteners. So the gap with that is the gap that we would see from last year to this year. So between our K through eight, K through seven learners, we didn't lose any numbers there. So the district stayed strong in that sense. The 29 kindergarteners, since kindergarten isn't mandatory, it is felt that this is why this number is so low. We had, in 2015, we had 49 births. And out of the 49 births, which would be representative for kindergarten this year, we had the 29. We, this number could probably jump next year back up closer to the 49. We've been running at 90% for the last six years from the births to what we see in our kindergarten enrollment. So if we recoup some of the students back in first grade, since this is where they're, the mandatory learning starts, then we could see a jump there. But then depending on the mindset of the community for the September enrollment, our kindergarteners could be lower. But we will probably recoup them back the following year because in 2016, we had 55 births. So 95% of that, we can expect hopefully by first grade in 22 to 23, 54 more kindergarteners coming back in, which will keep our numbers steady. The 724, the 724 K through 12 students at the bottom represents our K through eight students and then our high school students, which is on a upcoming slide.
So we, I have had many conversations with parents and Mrs. DePietro has had conversations with parents. A lot of our, what would have been kindergarteners this year did reach out to the school, did reach out for initial registration. And then withdrew once they found out about the school year and how it was going to run and things. We have several families that are homeschooling right now that have indicated that they're only homeschooling because of the pandemic and they will be coming back next year. So as Mrs. Lapre said, we do expect that kindergarten going into first grade number to be larger. The conversation that we'll be having in district in the next few months and as children register is our parents trying to register for kindergarten? Or are they trying to register for first grade and skip kindergarten? And so we will be looking at assessments of those children when they register. I've already been thinking about, do we need some additional kindergarten classrooms? Do we, and reassign people? Do we need to have additional first grade classrooms? Do we need to maybe have a pre-first grade classroom? And I know that that was something that Greenwood Lake had many years ago. It doesn't have currently, but that is a possibility as well for someone that didn't do kindergarten last year, but wants to go into first grade. We could maybe create a pre-first classroom. So we'll be looking at that and discussing that in the upcoming months as students register. Back to you, Sue, for.
Okay, this, this next slide is a new slide because this is our first year with remote learners and in-person learners. So you can see the breakdown here based on district, based on grade. And it is 25% of the district is remote. 18 of the elementary and 29 is in the middle school. So 29% of the middle school is remote and 18% of the elementary school is remote. And our high school enrollment, we have about 80%, I think, going to Warwick. And the other, I guess, maybe 18% is in Chester and then about 2% in the other high school.
The high school other would be schools like Burke, Don Bosco, et cetera.
This is our K through eight district. This is the graph that just shows the enrollment from 14, 15 through 2021. And it's been a slight decline, but it seems to be kind of steadying out until this past year, but that is representative of the kindergarten blip dropping. And this is our K through 12 student enrollment. And you can see how in this past year it dropped a bit based on the data and the way that this graph is set up. The 805 students are the total resident students we have in the district. And this includes our homeschool students, students that are going to private school that we just transport. It includes our special ed students, both preschool and K through eight that we transport. And all of, of course, are in district. So we have a total of 805 students that are residents in our district.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bray. Are there any questions from the board to Mrs. Lapre about our enrollment or students for any of the prior slides? All right, Mrs. Polczynski?
Yes, hi, everyone. So as you can see here, this slide is speaking to elementary school staffing. Due to the COVID pandemic, we have had to create smaller cohort classrooms, which has required us to reassign staff. Because of that, you will see certain areas that have zero. So K through six, Spanish was temporarily suspended this year as well as elementary PLTW due to the pandemic and the reassignments. RTI has also been, you'll see a zero there because RTI is now being done in the classroom by the classroom teacher this year. We do expect to reintroduce PLTW and K6 Spanish for the upcoming year. In addition, art, we anticipate art to be a full-time position at the elementary level as it has been in the past. The state is planning to lessen some of the restrictions on social distancing by this spring, which is leading me to think that we won't need to have such small cohorts for the upcoming school year. Does anyone have any questions on this? Okay, sorry. All right. And this is our middle school. So similarly, due to the pandemic, you will see certain parts that have a zero. At the middle school, our two RTI teachers are currently teaching classrooms this year, again, because of reassignments and smaller cohorts of classrooms. We are not looking at adding any additional staffing for next year, nor are we looking to reduce any of our staff. You will see that this year at the middle school, we do have one full-time teacher and a point four teacher, which that would be our elementary teacher who would return to the elementary school next year. And that would be only one full-time teacher at the art, at the middle school and one full-time at the elementary school. Does anyone have any questions about this slide? Hey.
All right, Mrs. Patrasi, English language learners.
Good evening, everyone. This slide is a representation over the course of the past six years, the population of English language learners that we've had in the district. As you can see, from the 2017, 18 school year to the projected 2021, 22 school year, our numbers appear to remain constant within the 12-student to 11-student range. It is important, however, to keep in mind that last year's projection, the 2021 school year projection was that we were going to have eight students in district that would require some form of English language learner or T-Soul, teacher of English of another language instruction. However, we did have an influx of students move into the district, which is now, our numbers are at 12. So when looking at that 11, that is for next year, rather, that is just a projection based on our current student population. If and when they do provide the NICE SLAT, which is the end-of-year assessment that we, the state provides for our students that receive these services, we'll know who is either, I shouldn't say aging out, but should be testing out of being an English language learner or if people move in and out of district. So just wanted to keep the board in mind with that. These are our special education demographics and placements for this school year. So our K8 students, we have 32 students that have 504 plans, which are general education students with some form of an accommodation plan. We have 59 students that have IEPs, which are Individuals Education Plan, that are, again, in district. And we have 10 students that are out of district, either in a public or private placement, out of district or homebound. In Chester High School, we have two students with 504 plans, 13 students with IEPs, and six students that are out of district or homebound. Warwick, 13 students with 504 plans, 24 with IEPs, and six that are out of district. This is a breakdown of our K8 enrollment. I, you'll note, I've talked previously about this. If you're noting our K3 population as far as our classification, you'll note that the four through eight is top-heavy and the K through three appears less. That is because students, as they get older, that is when the discrepancies start to come out, the deficiencies start to come out. And based on state regulations, we are able to start classifying. For example, a K through two learner is still learning how to read. So we could not get a child eligible for special education on a reading disability till late third grade, early fourth grade. So you'll see our numbers rise through the grade levels based on that. And again, as children grow older, gaps start to get larger, hence the classification rate tends to grow larger. Our seventh-grade cohort has been a large cohort of classified students, probably since the third or fourth grade. It's also noted, based on Mrs. Lapre's slide, that our enrollment is also largest in our seventh-grade, K through eight. So it would be comparable to that. In grades K through three, we have three teachers servicing those students at the elementary school. Grades four and five have three students, I'm sorry, three teachers servicing those students. One teacher is our special class teacher for our fourth and fifth graders. And the other two teachers, one is for fourth grade integrated co-teach and one is for fifth grade integrated co-teach. In looking at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you'll note there are four teachers. We have one teacher that services six, seven, and eight special class students. And we have one integrated co-teacher for grade six, seven, and eight.
Amy, do you anticipate the need to add or let, reduce any teaching positions in special?
I, I do not. Our, if we look at our numbers, again, especially in grades, you know, four, and if we move grade three into the middle school, that will definitely stay constant. And our kindergarten, as, again, to piggyback on what Mrs. Lapre had mentioned, it is a bit lower because our enrollment is lower in kindergarten. So we did have several students that were enrolled in district that might have been classifiable or were classifiable, whose parents opted to homeschool them. So that number is lower. Plus, our preschool numbers are a bit higher this year of preschool students that will probably, we are right in the middle of annual reviews right now, but will probably meet school age eligibility for in-district special education services. So again, those numbers will remain pretty much constant. And just right now, we also have two students in the second grade that are, will be holding initial eligibility meetings for, that are likely to be classified. So that second grade number will move up to five.
And I just want to clarify before, when Amy talked about third grade moving to the middle school, she's not talking about third grade moving up to the middle school. She's talking about those third graders becoming fourth graders.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying, Sarah.
That is not the case. Okay.
Yeah. This is the continuum of special education services. If reading from left to right, it would be least restricted, which is just related services only. Moving on to consultant teacher, which is when a teacher goes into the classroom and is just servicing her subset, hers or his subset of students with or without related services. We have resource room standalone, which is a small group of special ed students in a group no larger than five students and one teacher with or without related services. Then we have a combination of a consult teacher and a resource room with or without related services. We have integrated co-teach model, which is when we have two teachers who are equally educating the students in the classroom, and that could be also with or without related services. We have special class partial day with or without related services. So that's smaller class instruction, no larger than 15 students in the classroom with one teacher and one teaching assistant. And we also have a special class all day. They're integrated for lunch recess specials with or without related services in a typical non-COVID year. And then we have special class skill support in addition to regular programming. All of our services, when we're planning, it's just worth noting, the reason why there, for some grade levels, there have one type, some have all of our different models, is driven strictly by student need. And that's done every year. So this is for the 2021 school year. It might look slightly different for the coming school year based on the needs of the kids. Right now, we have district-wide 10 special education teachers. We have one occupational therapist and a point five physical therapist who we contract with. We have two speech therapists, one at the elementary school, that's a point six, and one full-time who is at the middle school, however, does cover some classes and services down at the elementary school. We have two school psychologists, one at the elementary school, one at the middle school, two school nurses, again, elementary and middle school. We have teaching assistants, six teaching assistants that are servicing special education students and one aide. TA, it's worth noting, this is not in addition to what was, that, it's not in addition to what was on slides seven and eight, it's inclusive of. We have one ELL teacher who works between both schools and two guidance counselors, one at the elementary school and one at the middle school.
Do any board members have any questions on special education or ELL enrollment or programming before we move on?
I had one question. The NICE SLAT, did they take them last year?
We did not. They, they did not. That was part of.
Right.
The waiver. So the waiver, and so we had to determine it. They stayed in their current level of where they were. And that's what we were told to do based on the guidance from the regulations. And again, we're waiting to see what they're going to do for this year. As I think we're all waiting to hear what they're, they're going to do for this year.
Okay, thank you.
This is the special education district plan. So I was invited to the meeting with our policy committee. And we discovered that our district should have a district special education services plan. Now, we do have all our policies in place and we've been implementing those policies in place. However, we did need a formal plan that needs to be adopted by the Board of Education. So I began working on it. It is currently between 30 to 35 pages. And it will be sent to the policy committee to read through and adopt. But I did want to go through some of the topics that will be included as part of the plan. All of these topics are encompass what are, is already in the commissioner's regulations, Part 200 for special education. And they, I've just designed them to be more specific to our school district, especially being a K8 school district. It will include the implementation of school-wide approaches and pre-referral interventions, which is RTI. The provision of appropriate special education services to enable involvement and progress in the general ed curriculum, which is a least restrictive environment and including our, all of our students as one. Our Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, appointing and training chairpersons and staff to know how to appropriately engage in those meetings. Just general staff development in the area of special education for all our. for all our staff members, general ed and special education. Extended school year services for those special education students that are recommended to receive them. Equal access to instructional materials. For example, could be larger print items, could be Braille if we had a student that would require that. Access to assistive technology devices and services. All our students do have Chromebooks or some form of an iPad. However, some of our students do require talk to text and other additional type assistive technology, so we provide that as well. Our special education records, access to them and the confidentiality that surrounds them. Guidelines for participation of students with disabilities in state and district wide assessments. And then full descriptions of our in district and out of district special education programs, as well as our special education programs for our preschoolers. We do not have a preschool special education program in district. However, we work in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to provide preschool services to our students. Overall program evaluation, which is what we do every single year to make sure that our students are getting the best possible special education services and tweaking our programming accordingly. Being sure that we have appropriate space for our related service providers, our classroom spaces for our students. A budget that Ms. LaRoe is so kind enough to share, our special education school year budget. The continuum of in district special education services, which I showed you on a previous slide. And a list of our preschoolers with disabilities by type of type of setting they attend, whether it be related services only, a half day preschool program, a full day preschool program, and then all of our school age students ranked by disability or classification type and age. And that will be given to the Board of Educate, I'm sorry, to the Board of Education or people on the board who are on our policy committee to review.
Thank you, Amy.
Sarah, does that get then get adopted by the board or is it just something that we need?
Yep, so I believe it eventually gets adopted by the Board of Education. It'll go through the policy committee first. It'll get adopted by the board and then ultimately it will just be part of our ongoing things that we adopt every year.
Okay, thank you, Amy. I know that was a lot.
Yes.
That was the, I am, we are.
I was there for that moment. It was a great moment.
But that's one of the, honestly, that's one of the benefits of redoing the entire policy manual, which the board decided to do several years ago. And literally going through every single policy, step by step, reading through it thoroughly, making recommendations, discussing every single policy, it's allowing us to catch things like this. So it's been a very helpful process.
No, I agree. It's a long tedious process that hopefully will be done by next year, hopefully. But it is, we we had no idea we needed it and we did, so that was good.
So are there two things that I'd like to discuss with the board in terms of potential or possible additions to our staffing? One is a human resources. As the district and the board knows, we had a human resources consultant come in, speak with different bargaining units, speak with different administrators, speak with different, all different staff members that have different functions of HR department under their care. And they submitted a comprehensive report to us of feedback on things that we are doing well, things that we can approve on, et cetera. And one thing that became very clear is that we've got a lot of work to do. We have about six or seven people doing the job of human resources. And when you have that many people doing things, some things tend to fall through the cracks. We also have a lot of systems in place that the people who work in the district and know and know very well, but they're not written down anywhere. And so there's a need to get those written down somewhere. So part of the. Yes.
Can you just clarify, we don't have six to seven H R workers. We have sixty seven people splitting the duties of a H R person.
Correct. So I have part of it, Mrs. Lapri has part of it, Mrs. Polczynski has part of it, Mrs. LaRoe has part of it, Mrs. Finn has part of it. There are different people that take care of each of the other aspects of this that are already employed by the district. That's correct.
Exactly. I just didn't want anybody to think that we have six or seven people already.
I appreciate it, yes. So my recommendation in term, I I do believe this is important. Not having human resources system set up can open us up for liability and open us up for future issues. So it's my recommendation that we work with an experienced human resources person over the course of next year, either part time or full time, depending on the scope of the work and how long it takes it to get done. And then, once we have everything in place, come back to the board with a report of where we think we are and how we think we should move forward with human resources as a department. Does it need to go to one person? Can it be split between two people? How do we want to move forward with the department? But it is going to take a tremendous amount of work to get from where we are now to where we need to be in terms of human resources and documentation. The other aspect, potential addition to the district that we talked about last year and it ended up being eliminated due to COVID is the public relations. BOCES has this as a coser. The charge for the coser is twenty five, twenty seven thousand dollars per year and that gives us one day per week for the entire year. That twenty seven thousand dollars and it's approximately twenty seven thousand dollars covers the salary, pardon me, I thought, forgot that word for a second, the salary of that employee as well of all, as well as all their additional benefits, health insurance, et cetera. What we it would do is would help our district tell stories to print and media, press releases, media relations, social media, et cetera. Right now, all those things are done by the people you see on this call. We all kind of pitch in and try to do our thing. We also do sometimes work with BOCES and say to them, okay, we need a newsletter and then we work with BOCES to create that newsletter. We provide the content and they make it look good. Because of the ongoing pandemic and trying to limit the budget additions as much as possible, it's my recommendation that we continue utilizing BOCES on an as needed basis for right now and not move to this public relations position. But I would like the board's feedback on both of these this evening as we move forward through the budget process.
Would you like that now?
Please.
Okay, um, I am fine with no public relations. H R is something that we we do need as long as it fits within our budget and we don't have a larger state aid reduction. But I'm okay with it. And then let's let's go around. Yuquan, you're next on my screen.
Yes, same here. We've been talking about this a long time. Yeah.
I agree.
All for you.
Thank you. Matt, you're up next.
I'm for not hiring anybody until, like you said, until we figure out aid and everything like that. You know, if we're gonna be looking to fire people and hire people, it's probably not a good look.
Right, just so we don't panic anybody, right now, we have no perspective loss of.
No.
Staff. Just to clarify though, if as long as the aid stays as projected, would you be okay with a an H R, just to and for her to further investigate moving forward in the budget process?
I would say not now.
Okay.
Later on, maybe, not now.
Okay, um, Barbara.
So I I'm thinking, obviously, wait until the budget, right? So we find out what's going on with that. And I don't want to talk about the future just yet. I don't, I don't want to say like, yeah, let's hire somebody and then it not be the right time for that either, you know? Although I think it's a really good idea if once things settle and COVID is no longer a thing.
Okay, um, Erin.
I'm fine with H R.
Okay, thank you. Michelle.
Again, with there's no reduction in aid, I'm fine with H R. I think maybe initially having a part time H R and then see how it goes. And I am a no for the public relations.
Okay, T J.
I definitely think we could use the H R consultant, especially with COVID going on, so many changes. I think it'd be good to have a sole person to be able to go to that's got all the information for everybody. So I'm good with H R. Go ahead with the the public relations. I think we can hold off on for now.
Okay, Sarah?
Yes, got it. I have notes. Thank you, everybody. Mrs. LaRoe, tax levy limit compliance, tax cap. Just to be clear with everybody, this is required as a part of our budgeting process. We have to file the tax cap compliance forms and we have to share what the possible numbers are, not what the actual numbers are. We are way too early in the budget process to know about any tax impact. But we have to file this form just labeling a limit. And then we always work to stay, work to stay very much under that. But Anne, you can go ahead.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. Good evening. This is not establishing the tax levy, as Ms. Haddon said. This is establishing the property tax limit calculation, which needs to be submitted to the Office of the Controller by March first. So what is the real property tax limit? The state's property tax limit restricts the amount school districts can increase taxes to the lower of two percent or the rate of inflation, which is currently one point two three percent. We get to add a tax growth factor of point three six percent. The, I'm sorry, school boards must submit this information to the Office of the State Controller and affirm that the district will stay within the tax levy limit. If the district wants to exceed or override the tax levy limit cap, it's required to have sixty percent of the registered voters approve the override. So this year, the property tax cap limit is calculated by taking prior year, this year's tax levy of six million eight hundred and seventy eight thousand fifty four dollars and adding those inflationary numbers, which equal one point six percent or two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a tax levy limit of seventeen thousand one forty eight, one hundred and ten dollars. We have an available carryover from prior year. As Ms. Haddon said, we try not to levy to the limit. So we are able to increase, if we need to, by two hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars for a maximum allowable tax levy of seventeen million four hundred and seven thousand six hundred and eighty five dollars or an increase of three point one four percent.
So Anne, if I'm correct, that's the number that we have to submit to the state right now, correct?
Correct. That is not the limit that we have to levy to, but that is, that is the maximum levy limit.
And we've discussed several times prior to this that we are looking at doing a rollover at budget as the basis for our new spending plan. And we will determine what we can economize on from our existing budget as we continue to move forward. Are there any questions from the board on the tax cap levy limit section? Coming up, we have a Board of Education budget workshop on February twenty second. Then there is a budget committee meeting on March eighth, followed by another board meeting on March fifteenth. One more board workshop on April twelfth. And then on April nineteenth, we have our final budget adoption at a standard Board of Education meeting. So that is it for my portion of presentations, statements and presentations for the board.
Okay. Board member reports, Erin does not. Let's see. Matt, do you have anything for Chester?
I do not. I just know now. Obviously, the topic with sports and that's all they're going on with Chester is like us, everybody's gonna be voting on sports.
Yeah, um, Chester did, does start.
Person.
Full, full day tomorrow.
I'm.
That's our only other change.
And some of the, some of the students, I'm sure will be crying about it, but I think it's good for them.
I'm sure, but as a parent, I am thrilled.
Yes.
They never nine period day and 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 even though they started, it's a remote. It it's a, it's a full day school experience.
Yes.
Okay, Yuquan, do you have anything for Warwick?
No, except that the big talk is sports again. Looks like they're going forward with a very interesting meeting. So let's see, let's see what happens.
They they move forward, but interesting, they have no modified right now on high risk sports. That was, that was an interesting twist on their meeting. Um, okay. Oxba, Matt and I and Sarah attended the Oxba meeting. It was the day of the legislation, day before Capitol Conference. So there was a lot of, you know, legislative talk. And that was good. Matt, would you like to update on the legislation? Advocacy?
Obviously, the big talk is all about the aid with everybody, so. Any fun, they're talk to any school district, the first words out of their mouth is when we get in the aid, how we get in the aid, how it's being distributed, and that's all they want to talk about. And I don't blame them because everybody's got to know what to do. Everybody's, you know, are they laying off, they're not laying off, or are they, you know, trying to get back to school? There's a lot depends on the aid and that's what everybody's concerned with.
Yes, it was a lot about the aid and how and and prepping those that met with legislators. And it was an interesting meeting though, and and some sports in the end. Those are the hot topics of of the time. P T S A does not have a report and Village of Greenwood Lake, is Kathleen still on here? Does she have anything? Okay, I guess we'll move on. Now we're gonna move into our discussion, topics for discussion. And Sarah, would you like to lead off?
Yep. Maybe.
We have two topics for discussion tonight. One was our closure, where we had to close our middle school and the other one is sports.
My board agenda closed. Okay, just wanted to update everybody and have a talk about COVID specific numbers as well as the school closure. COVID by the numbers, we've had a total of thirty two cases to date in our district. That's five point two percent of our population. Our current positivity rate is a point three two percent, that is two individuals. In the county, the positivity rate yesterday was six point nine percent and our seven day average for the county is six. In the county, the positivity rate yesterday was 6.9%, and our seven-day average for the county is 6.5%. Just as a reminder to everybody that when we do have a case and it's been identified or we're notified of a case, then we begin contact tracing. Anyone that's in the classroom with the individual is determined to be a first or close contact. And then there are other locations and exposures based upon individual circumstances and our discussions with the case, as well as Department of Health's discussion with the case. We also use schedules, contact tracing sheets outside every single door where people sign in and out after visiting at that space. When someone is identified as a close contact, they are mandated to have a 10-day quarantine. And then on the 11th day, the individual can return to work with clearance from the doctor and the Department of Health. So I've been asked, how do I determine when we needed to close and how did I make that decision? And the best answer I can give is when I know, I know. And at the end of January, I knew. It's definitely based on the number of cases and the locations of those cases, as well as the number of affected students, the number of affected staff, and availability of substitutes. So time and time again this year, I've gotten emails and phone calls from parents thanking me for finding a way to get all children in five days per week and for staying open with limited disruption. We've been able to do so through the procedures and protocols we have in place based upon our Restart Greenwood Lake reopening document, which is created based on state guidance and mandates specific to COVID, as well as input from stakeholders, including teachers, staff, bus drivers, administrators, board members, community members, parents, and medical professionals. It has been able to happen due to the dedication of every single employee, and that we maintain the highest levels of safety throughout our buses, schools, classrooms, and hallways. It is also a huge thanks to our outstanding custodial team members who clean and sanitize our buildings every night and spend their days keeping high-touch surfaces disinfected. As discussed earlier, at the end of January, I had to close the middle school for a week due to a number of cases in the short amount of time, as well as one individual case that caused nine classrooms to shut down, as well as a handful of staff and teachers. At that time, I decided to shut down the school for a week to stop potentially from becoming a cluster, as defined by the Department of Health, as well as concerns about staffing shortages due to the number of adults quarantined after contact with the cases from that time period. Once I made that decision, I received numerous emails and calls asking me how to avoid closure in the future and how to stop this from happening again. Please know that our cohorting strategy is working, and it's not just working, but it's working extremely well. When there is a case, there is a very small number of individuals quarantined as a result compared to many other districts in our county. This is because we do not mix classes. Students do not travel through the building between classes, passing each other in the hallway. Classes are separated even on the playground. We have virtual clubs to reduce the risk of exposure among students and staff. Students eat lunch in their classrooms to, again, limit exposure and risk of quarantining and to maximize the amount of time spent in in-person instruction. One item that has been a challenge for the district is the number of people quarantined when an individual tests positive. When a teacher or staff member gets quarantined either through exposure at school or exposure at home, they have to be out for 10 to 14 days, depending on circumstances. While often these individuals can work and teach from home, having enough substitutes is a daily struggle due to the statewide substitute shortage. We have two semi-permanent subs that we are able to have, so that we are able to have steady coverage when someone is out on quarantine, and that has helped. But really, it all depends on how many staff members are quarantined at a time. To date, we've had 32 cases, and I share that update every month. But we've had to quarantine 237 individuals due to exposure at school. 37 of those are staff members. Because of numbers like this, the superintendents of Orange County have been advocating to the New York State Department of Health for changes to the quarantining protocols as required by the state. For example, it would help our staffing if we were able to implement mandatory quarantining only for those individuals within six feet of the case, as opposed to the whole classroom, unless a specific circumstance warrants it. This would help not only with keeping students in school, but keeping staff and teachers in school as well. While we continue to advocate at the state level, we do, we will continue to implement all protocols as determined by the state and local health departments. I know that some board members had questions specific to the closure, and I wanted to be able to address those now.
Do you have those questions, or would you like me to go to those board, get at different board members?
No, if my speech answered some of them, so.
Okay.
No, if.
Let me, um, I'll go back around. Yuquan, did you have any questions for Sarah on the closure? Yuquan? Okay, no. All right. Matt, you?
I have a question or two, I guess. What percent of the faculty has had COVID or has been vaccinated? Like, I'm, I'm wondering, like, when are we gonna get to the turn for positive, say? You know what I mean?
So the number of staff that have become positive, I can absolutely get that and send that to you. I don't have that readily firsthand. I'd have to just do a little bit of math. It would take me a couple of seconds to do it. I could probably do it while you guys are doing, approving things in a little while. In terms of number of staff vaccinated, I don't have that number at all. Staff do not need to report whether they've been vaccinated or not. I can certainly ask the question. But I, judging by the Facebook posts that I've seen, cheering in the, whoa, the cheering in the hallway, and the, you know, the excitement of staff, I think it is a pretty large percentage. Also, if you remember that, also by the number of emails that I'm getting, asking people if I have any updates on the availability of vaccines, vaccine appointments. If you remember, at first, we were hoping to offer the vaccine here in district. That has not been the case so far. They've been making everybody go through that state site, so I've been sharing vaccination appointments with staff every time I find out that there are appointments open. Judging by our survey, initial survey, when I thought we were gonna be able to do it in district, it looked like, I believe, it was about, up to about 75% of our staff were wanting to get vaccinated. So I imagine that at some point, we will get to that. The key right now, right, is that at the state level, even if you're vaccinated, you do still have to quarantine. That has not changed from the state level at this point. We expect that that guidance will come down from the CDC, then to the state, and then to the local health departments eventually. But I think they want some real numbers in terms of the efficacy of the vaccine first. So I don't know when that will come down.
Thank you.
Matt, just to clarify, when you say number of staff positive, you mean total number of staff across the district, right? Not just teachers and not just a certain type of staff, just any employee?
Everyone, like, yeah.
Okay.
You know, when one teacher, you know, wiped out, you know, I was wondering, when do we get to a positive point where that doesn't happen, say, you know?
So in terms of quarantining and how many people are quarantined, all of that is determined by the state and local health departments based on the rules that the state has.
Okay, I have a question because I know the prospects of vaccinating are fairly high at about 75%. But I know, um, getting a vaccine, I know just from, from the Oxba meeting and from different board meetings that I've been watching, that they're still having, a lot of people having a hard time actually getting the vaccine. I know there's a lot that want it, but are they, you know, I know some of our teachers have, you know, by Facebook, I can see they've gotten them. But I'm not sure right now that that's continuing. So I'm just curious, you know, when it comes to the entire district staff of, who have contact with students.
So I just was able to secure my appointment last week, and my appointment is at the end of March for mine. It is anticipated that by mid-April, any educator that wants a vaccine should be at least in the beginning of the process.
Okay, and the process is still basically a 30-day process, and then 60 more days till they reach immunity, I think?
Yeah, I believe 10 days past the second dose is when you're considered vaccinated, fully immune.
Okay. TJ, do you have questions about the closure?
Who, who ultimately makes that decision, Sarah?
So that decision in January was ultimately up to me.
Okay.
It's possible that the health department would make the decision on a certain, certain, certain circumstances, but in that instance, it was my decision.
And again, that came from staffing numbers, being able to support between distance and in-person and everything. It was, and overall, it affected the whole building?
Pretty much. It affected almost every grade level in the entire building, yes. In terms of staffing, there were, there was a lot of, there were enough staff quarantined that we knew we would not have enough subs to cover.
Okay.
And again, it wasn't due to just one case. It was due to the series of cases that we had in a very close time period.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Barbara, any questions? No? Michelle? Erin? Okay, thank you, Michelle. I saw the nod. Erin, your questions?
Yeah, I mean, we, sorry, we thought about ways to lessen contact more so that if it is a particular staff member, it doesn't affect so many kids and staff.
So the, at the beginning of the school year, we talked about that certain, in, in most cases, it would be a very small because we have one teacher with one classroom. We do have teachers that teach multiple, right? So if I'm an art teacher, I teach all of the classrooms in the school. So the only way to really reduce that would be to have those teachers, A, teach remotely, but then you'd still have to have someone in the classroom with the students, so it wouldn't really reduce that. Or hire additional, you know, teachers or specials teachers so that each grade level had their own, but that really wouldn't be cost-effective because they wouldn't be doing anything. So we have minimized exposure to the greatest extent possible. Was there another part to the question that I missed?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I think I got to everybody. Sarah, my, my question is, um, we know the percentage of quarantined due to cases in our building and, and how the numbers of it. How many have been quarantined due to just non-school exposure? I'm sure that number is larger, like, that, that isn't reported to the, to the community. And how does that impact the staffing and?
So it's, yes, it's obviously much larger. We don't track that at the district level. That is handled between parents and the school building because it becomes a, it's a much larger picture. And it really doesn't have anything to do with the district or anything affecting the district, other than the student can't come to school. So we don't track that number at the district level. The principals track that number. Each one of them does have spreadsheets that kind of has started to track that, just so we know who's out and who's coming back and when. In terms of how does that affect staff, the student is able to go remote temporarily, and because they're able to go remote temporarily, they stream into their live classroom while their peers are in school and they are out of school. But they can still strive, stream into their classroom that they would normally be with on a regular basis.
Okay, what about staff that have to quarantine? They can work remotely, but then we would need a sub in the classroom. And that number, if it's just a contact, a first-contact quarantine, it's not in our numbers.
So that depends, okay, so are you asking about staff that need to quarantine in, in general?
Quarantine for, for non-school-related exposure.
Okay.
That's a different number. Like, is that a significant thing that factors into substitute need?
Yes.
Okay, like, I don't know how many it is, and that's not in our realm, I guess. But I'm sure, just like we have students that have to quarantine from outside exposure that are not, you know, not positive, I'm sure it's, it's gotta impact our staffing. Do you see that along with a large quarantine, again, closing our building? Is that a factor in that would help close our building?
Would outside contacts be a factor to close our building? Not likely, because those are individually-based circumstances. The only thing I can think about is if multiple amounts of our staff members were at an event on a weekend. Let's say there was a, I, I don't know, I, one of our staff members had a child that had a bat mitzvah, and they went to the bat mitzvah party, I don't know. And, but then someone ended up testing positive, and that whole group is quarantined. So in that case, if there's, you know, an entire group of teachers there, then yes, it could potentially. But for the most part, those events are specific to that individual's close friend group or family.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't utilizing a large amount of our subs. That, that, that's what I was trying to rationalize in my mind, is that we have to spread them out, you know?
Yeah, so when we determine where the sub goes, we do have the two substitutes, certified substitute teachers that we use. I try to put them into classrooms where the teacher is going to be out for an extended period of time. I also take the age of the class into consideration, as well as the certification of the substitute and the certification of the person that is out. And then we use those determinations, and we figure out where the best fit is for that person at that time. We also look at, like I said, what that person teaches. So for example, special ed guidance says that we must prioritize in-person teaching above all else. So it's more likely that we would put, we would put one of our substitute teachers into that classroom, and then the teacher would not necessarily teach remotely, or maybe only part-time teach remotely, as opposed to in a eighth-grade classroom, let me pick a subject, science. If that person were to get quarantined, then they could teach remotely a little bit easier in the eighth grade, right? Then you could teach remotely in kindergarten. So all those factors come into play.
Okay, I'm just, you know, everybody's lives are going on as they should. It's just wanted to know specifically how that was impacting when you combine that with another large, you know, for, for a grade level that has to quarantine, you know? Is that enough to affect it? But I appreciate it. Does anybody else have any other questions for this part of the discussion?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Sarah, the number you give for total persons that had to quarantine, are they counted twice if they've been quarantined twice, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's actually number of instances, but I, I didn't know how to say that directly. But yes, it's number of instances of quarantine.
I have one more question. Do, do you see the cases coming from out of school and, you know, and then coming into the school? Like, the majority of them? Is that what's going on?
Yes, yes, people are getting infected at out-of-school events or at home. They have a parent that tested positive, or a sibling that tested positive, or a grandparent or an aunt or uncle, or they were at an event and tested positive as a result of that. We are saying very limited to no, no testing positive due to exposure at school. So out of all those people that we've quarantined, almost nobody is testing positive later.
So the school is the safest space right now for the kids?
Yes.
I would say, all right.
Yes, the, the, the in-school protocols that we have in place with the social distancing, the masking, the cohorting that we have in place, 100% kids are absolute in the safest place possible, is my belief in terms of schooling.
Okay, everybody, any follow-ups, anything? Okay, Sarah, move on.
All right, so our, oh, it's actually still this. All right, coronavirus and sports impact on coronavirus. I have been forwarding the Board of Education, the guidance from the state, and local health departments, athletic association, et cetera, over the past weeks. I know it's also being passed through the internet. So I just want to start with a statement about sports and then lead into a discussion. So I just want to start with a statement about sports and then lead into a discussion at the board level and get feedback as we decide how to move forward. As I think about the potential of starting sports, I reflect upon everything I shared a little while ago during our discussion on the closure. I also think about the academics and health impacts of starting in-person sports. If a coach gets quarantined, they cannot teach their classes in person for the next few weeks. If a bus driver gets quarantined, we are even shorter on substitutes there. We run the risk of having to close a building, because we literally cannot get the students to school. You should know, although I don't look at right now, that I was a three-season athlete in high school, and I played tennis for my college team all four years. I understand all the health, wellness, and social emotional benefits that come from being a member of a sports team. The bonds and experiences are absolutely irreplaceable. I have friendships that I've had for life that can be specifically traced back to athletic teams. That said, I am now in a position where I have to make decisions not about, just about academics of our district. Over the past 12 months, I have been additionally tasked with making major decisions that could potentially impact the health of those I am charged with overseeing and responsible for: students, staff, teachers, administrators. There are things I must consider when thinking about whether to proceed with sports, and also which ones specifically. The state has divided sports into three categories: high-risk, moderate risk, and low risk. They mean exactly what they sound like. In high-risk sports, there's a high likelihood that the COVID virus will spread among team members due to the function of that sport. In lower-risk sports, there is less likely to be viral spread. There are multiple other factors that I've had to think about when making a recommendation on how to move forward. Mixed messages: There are very clear rules we have to follow as a New York State public school between the beginning and end of day bells in regards to physical distancing. Somehow, these rules miraculously change in the sports guidance after the bell rings. How can it be safe at 2:35 to toss a ball back and forth to each other, but 20 minutes earlier at 2:15 in a PE class it not be allowed? Another mixed message: The district did not allow in-person clubs this year, specifically to keep cohorts based on academic classrooms only. If sports are allowed in person, I would argue that the same condition should be available for clubs, musical groups, and other district activities that address the whole child outside academics. Sports must be open to both in-person students and remote students. I struggle with a student being kept home for remote instruction due to safety concerns, but then being sent in to participate in a team after school. Number of participants: I wonder if we will have enough students to be able to actually field a team. Waivers, consent forms, and board approval. It says something to me about the number of waivers and consent forms that are required for participation in sports this year. They've never been required before, so if now, then there must be a real concern about participation. Concerns we don't fully understand, as noted by the Orange County Department of Health and its health risk communications. The Department of Health is requiring board approval before moving forward with any specific high-risk sports. If an athlete has had COVID, cardiac screening is recommended due to COVID-specific effect on the heart muscle. Testing: I think about putting health and safety as the number-one priority this year. If we will be mixing cohorts, I believe testing should be a part of our protocols, weekly, at a minimum. There are districts that are doing it daily. Staff: I have concerns about coaching. That coaching adds an additional exposure to our staff, even though it is their choice to coach. I have concerns about a coach being exposed to a player on their team and then being unable to teach students their academics during the day. Bus drivers becoming contacts is a great concern for both bus transportation supervisor Mr. Mackey and for me. We currently have zero substitute bus drivers. That leaves us in a real bind if someone gets quarantined as a result of a positive student or staff member on the bus, especially with other daily absences. Transportation home after practices adds an extra instance of unnecessary exposure. The two sides of this coin are health and safety, keeping in-person instruction as the main goal, versus providing equity of access to those who may not be able to get a ride home after practice. Spectators: Section 9 sports has determined no spectators for winter sports. That discussion will be revisited for the fall and spring sports seasons. Even if Section 9 allows spectators, do we want to allow such? Our restart Greenwood Lake reopening document has had to submit to the state specifically, discusses no unnecessary visitors on campus. That would need to be revisited. Staffing requirements: In addition to the coach, every time there is a home game, the district must provide what the state calls a singular point of contact as the COVID protocol expert. This person will be in charge of the screenings, forms, signage, and much more. This will be an additional cost that has not been in place in the past. Informed consent: I trust parents to make decisions based on the knowledge they have. I would expect that all parents would read the many forms they have to sign in order for their child to participate in sports this year. The concern for me is that even the doctors don't know the long-term effects of this virus on our people, our bodies, and our hearts specifically. Other districts: While we can control our protocols, procedures, testing requirements, et cetera, we cannot decide for other districts. There's great potential that the students on the other team will not be as well-vetted as our own, and therefore are a direct risk to our own students in terms of catching the virus or being quarantined as a result of a positive athlete from the opposing team. Are there going to be other teams to play against? Modified sports are not being offered in multiple districts across Orange County and Section 9 as a whole. In fact, Section 1 has banned modified sports altogether. All of those things considered, I understand that there is a strong desire to implement sports in some capacity. There is a need to balance the rules and regulations with practical execution of a school district. Winter sports were already decided to be a no-go or at October board meeting. I will also be, I will only be addressing fall sports, which are set to occur from March 1st to April 30th, and spring court sports, which are set to occur from May 1st to June 25th. After much thought and deliberation, it is my personal and professional opinion that we should move forward as follows. Number one, no high-risk sports. To me, the risk here does not outweigh the reward. I do not feel comfortable putting our students or staff in a position where they are more likely to catch COVID-19. For us, this specifically would apply to volleyball. Number two, only outdoor sports and practices should be considered. If it rains, or if the weather or any way does not allow for outdoor practice, then practice should be canceled that day. Number three, both the athletic directors and the school nurse have expressed great concern about the safety of students on the soccer fields in March. There is a much greater risk of injury to students when the ground is frozen, slippery from snow, or soggy from wet conditions of melted snow or rain. The grass will not have the time to grow, and the ground will not be warm enough to play safely on. Field conditions are simply not safe for soccer in March as compared to September. Mr. LeCron and Mrs. LaRoche are both willing to speak more to their concerns. Based on this, I do not recommend moving forward with soccer as a fall sport. Number four, transportation: Transportation should be provided to and home, to and from away games only. So it needs to be picked up after all practices and from the school parking lot after a game. This will minimize the impact on our transportation department. Number five, testing: I recommend weekly testing for all athletes and coaches. The district could facilitate this, or individuals could provide their own test results from their doctors or other testing sites. In summary, I support hiring coaches and creating teams for the following sports: after a committee has matched to determine district-specific protocols we put into place. For fall sports, which is March 1st to April 30th, cross-country only. For spring, which is May 1st to June 25th, baseball, softball, and track. Thank you for your time this evening and for listening. I now have some slides to go through and to allow the board to discuss the same issues and metrics at length in order to help us determine how to.
Um, Sarah, at what point can we ask, before your slides or after? But I think to hear from Laura LaRoche and Bill Cronn.
Absolutely.
Also, so whenever you'd like to fit that in?
I can do that right now. Bill Cronn, do you want to start?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Good evening.
Thanks, Bill.
First, I would like to say I'm happy to be vaccinated, and tomorrow I get my second vaccination. And that I miss sports more than anything, I'm sure. You know that I've been coaching soccer for 19 years in the district, and it was tough not to do it in the beginning of the year. I also know the fields better than anyone, and I shouldn't say anyone, but Mr. Buckley is here, and he's also a coach and has seen the fields. So he knows the fields very well, too, and some other people do know the fields. But in my professional opinion, the fields will just be unplayable when it comes to March and April. At the rate of snow we're getting now and the cold, the ground is going to be frozen, and the inches of snow could still be there in April. We could have April snowstorms. And I just don't think it will be safe, and I don't think it'll be playable. And we're just creating ourselves a problem by having soccer. I really would love to have soccer, but personally, I just don't see it.
And Bill, you've been talking to me about your concerns about the soccer fields since September, when they first canceled the fall sports, correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand what they're trying to do, and, and I, I, like I said, I really would love to see it, but it's, it's just, I mean, even if we practiced inside, we're, we're not going to get games in. And again, who are we going to be playing? Or, or if we're playing away games, what are their fields going to be like? Are their fields going to be safe? Like, or, we can't have kids, like, falling on, on a frozen ground and sliding across icy rocks and, and no grass. It's just not safe, and somebody's going to get caught, or, or broken, or hurt, and it's just not going to work.
Thank you. Bill, if you can kind of stay close in case there's follow-up questions for you. Mrs. LaRoche? I know you were out there earlier.
She was still there.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I'm in total agreement with Bill, the same. We're talking about the ability for the children to even see the lines on the field. We're talking about the safety and well-being. Of course, we want the sports. Love it to see the kids running around and get exercise, but as far as Sarah mentioned, the other teams being vetted and whether they're going to be as healthy as our kids is a major concern to me. You know, we, we're doing a fantastic job at our school, but we're not sure about the other schools, you know? The field is also, as Bill said, the ice, the mud, the, you know, the amount of snow we have now. March is right, right around the corner. So I don't think the field is going to be an end condition for the students at this point, unfortunately. All right.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRoche. If you could also stay close in case they have follow-up questions for you.
Absolutely.
Can we also, I, I realize Chris Ferry is on here, too. Can we just get his, not just about soccer, but his, he's the co-athletic director? I don't want to leave him out.
No, I was actually just going to go over to him.
Okay.
Great minds think alike. Mr. Ferry, did you want to share anything specific to sports and your thoughts on sports?
I appreciate it. Thank you for letting me discuss that. Um, as, as Bill said as well, I definitely would like to see it up and running and going. Um, you know, I've been coaching since I've been here. Um, I do see the logistics of it, and I do hear in athletics, as everybody trying to get them going. Cross-country won't be as much of a factor, the field conditions, because we're running. And in my mind, I've seen if school was in session, they're clearing the path for us to run, so therefore we can make something. And then also, I've been very creative with the spring track, and since we don't have a track, how to get track practices in, in general. So that's a lot more doable, but I definitely agree with the field conditions. As somebody who's played soccer in both middle school and high school, that I would not want to play during the frozen conditions in fear of injuries, and especially at the level of modified.
Did either Bill or Chris, I know you, we've had many conversations over the last few months specific to sports. Did you guys want to share anything else about your, and, and we've gone back and forth, and I think have enlightened each other on different aspects of this. And I've learned definitely from you guys, and adjusted my opinion based on your feedback, for sure. But I didn't know if there was anything else, either of you wanted to share specifically relative to sports in general on Greenwood Lake?
Um, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I just know the kids have, have been enthusiastic and asking me questions about it, and I, and I, I really just given them the same answer, that, look, I can't really talk about that right now. I can't help you right now. There's still a lot of decisions to be made. And of course, they want to play, and it's really tough, and it's, it, look, you know, but I, when I look at the, the field right now, I, I just kind of say, I just know it's not going to happen. I just, that's just the way I feel.
Thank you. Chris, anything?
Yeah, my main concern is, my main concern is the other schools around the area pushing more emphasis on JV and varsity sports. If they have to make decisions based on the modified, where we only have the modified program, it's going to be hard for us to get those games in. They have said that they will work around schedules and stuff like that, but even that, how far do we want to travel for some of these games? Like, if it was a normal season, sometimes they're going up to Tri Valley and Liberty, which is out of, you know, the question for that, so that's something that we didn't want to do. So I think the modified level is a very hard thing for any school to get going and running. On that, as the same, though, I said, every single day, they ask, the kids ask, one school is going, or one sport's going to start, one sport's going to start, one sport's starting, the same thing. So it's, you know, the kids are going to be heartbroken, but you have to look out for their safety and concerns as well first.
Thank you. Laura, did you want to add anything else in general, or just want to give you the opportunity? Can't hear you. You got on mute.
Wow, uh, yeah, it's just the safety aspect. And I think as far as, I think the kids with Mr. Ferry, they'll be all interested in doing something other than the soccer. They can switch over to the, the running cross-country or the track and get that exercise in that we're really looking for. I know that just to be disappointed about the field, but they can also switch over to something just to get that exercise in, and, you know, remain safe.
Thank you. Thank you to all three of you again. Stay, stay close.
Um, Laura, at this point, um, gee, does Rob have anything to say as our facilities person? Or do you want to wait on that for questions?
Um, he, he has knowledge of the fields. I don't think, I, I think it would be the same thing that Bill and Chris shared and Laura.
Okay.
Um, he does estimated costs for improvement if the fields were used and they were not prepared. But in terms of opinions on the field, the use itself, it would echo Chris and Bill and Laura's sentiments.
Okay, thank you.
So in October, we, we talked about the, the option of winter sports. This, the left-hand side of this is actually copied exactly from the October meeting, where we talked about for winter sports, it was going to be conditioning practices only. No games would be allowed, and it was basketball and cheerleading, and that they were developed, working on schedules. At that point, the district and the board decided not to move forward with the winter sports, and therefore, the athletic directors withdrew from participation on the modified winter sports. Multiple other districts are also not participating in winter sports at the modified level. In addition, there is only a week and a half left in the winter sports season. High schools began their practices, I believe, on January 19th, the day after Martin Luther King Day. So they have had several weeks of conditioning practices and then a week of real practices. So they have time for a couple of games. We don't have any games scheduled, nor would we have the time to put that into place with only a week and a half left. So that is why our discussion moved to simply to the fall sports and the spring sports seasons. This is just a review of the low, moderate, and high-risk sports, and what those mean. And I discussed that in my speech earlier. Our potential fall sports, which would run from March 1st to April 30th, are soccer, moderate-risk volleyball, high-risk, and cross-country low-risk. There is the potential to have all three of these sports, depending on how the board goes tonight. However, it is my recommendation that we move forward with cross-country only. And in terms of spring sports, there is baseball, softball, and truck, track, moderate risk and low to moderate risk, depending on the event and track. moderate risk and low to moderate risk depending on the event and track. Um, and it is my recommendation that we could move forward because all of those are outdoor events and we could create practices in such ways that they would allow for cohorting within the team. So my recommendation would, could be that we move forward with all of these. Uh, so things to think about in terms of the board level, and I'm going to pull up my things so I can take notes. Um, but I just wanted to now get board feelings on so all of these different items that I discussed. Uh, the first one would be uh the rules from seven thirty to two thirty versus after-school. The general policy of not mixing cohorts at uh, and if sports are okay, why not clubs, band, chorus, why not during the day, why not after school, et cetera? Um, and then the social emotional aspect of participating, being on a team. I don't know why that's under mixed messages. So just take that out because it's on a later slide. I think I copied and pasted. So, does anyone on the board want to?
Yeah, uh, I, I, I'll start. Um, just uh Matt was on the Oxba uh meeting with me and I did voice some of these concerns. It's a frustration. It's, it's actually not about kids playing sports, but it's about the difference of the rules between, you know, seven thirty and two thirty and two thirty after. Um, and why a gym class still needs the extreme social distancing and any sport does not. Um, everybody, you know, we, we're looking at trying to move on and, and come back to some sense of normal. But that doesn't make any sense in, in the world of guidance and rules. Um, so that, that happens to be a a sticking point for me and it's not a sports thing. It's a guidance thing. We have, we must do certain things between seven thirty and two thirty and then it changes. Um, mixing cohorts is um again, equity. Why is it okay to mix sports cohorts and not other cohorts? Um, band still has the twelve-foot distance, chorus still has the twelve-foot distance. Um, all of these things are still in effect for other things, but waived for a sport. It, it's not about the sport. It's about the actual rules that they're giving us and how they conflict and why one is okay and isn't okay. It has no actual data or science to it. You know, they love to use science, but that's not science that sports are okay. And, you know, you can't have a marching band or a band or anything. Um, so those are my two mixed message issues and I will be more than happy to go through our board again. Yuquan, I hate to do this, but you're first on my screen. Can you stick to the two topics?
I just want to throw out there too, in addition to Bill and Chris here as athletic directors and Laura LaRoche as our nurse. We also have Julie Shaw on here as who is our, our district legal counsel uh that is here and available for questions as well from the board. Um, so if anyone wants to speak about any of these slides, specific to any of these individuals, um, you can do so.
I just have a question for AEDs. So man, are, are you, are you in contact with the other AEDs in other schools? Specifically the teams that we used to play, the schools that we used to play soccer?
Chris, did you want to, because I know you spoke to a couple of the other schools.
Yeah, I, I spoke to uh mostly Chester. I have a good relationship with the director there. Um, and they are currently at the same spot where we are, where they would like to see things get going. Um, but it's going to be up to the board and they're presenting there. I do know they are running programs right now um, on that one, and I'm waiting to hear from him how things are, are going for him as well. Um, the other schools as well is not as much. Some emails went out. I just never got back from the modified programs, especially on that one. Some are very mixed results about the modified programs and whether it's going to happen for that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious if uh, if you guys are in touch, in contact with those uh other schools about, you know, especially when Mr. Crum mentioned he doesn't know which teams could even be playing. So I think it's very important uh for, for AEDs to, to keep in contact, uh, constant contact with those other AEDs specifically.
I, I think that when I said that, I, I want to say that, that I think they're still in the process of making some decisions like we are. So even though they're on the schedule, there's always that possibility that they may not be on the schedule, you know, in the future. And that could present a problem if we went ahead with it because then we go from having eight games to say two games. And so I think like right now, like they're at the same point we are. We're kind of like waiting to see what the decision is and and that's, that's, that's a problem, you know, like, because we don't want to lose our whole schedule.
Well, this is the thing. I mean, we're, I mean, as, as AEDs, you know, there is a decision. But I, I, I understand we're going to make the policy, the board, but as AEDs, you sort of have an understanding with other AEDs of what the school is leaning towards to, you know? So if we decide to not have uh soccer and the other schools decide to have soccer, then it's just a cascading effect. You know, so, okay, they decided not to have soccer. Okay, we're not going to have soccer because we don't know who we can play. There's no teams that can play. You know, Greenwood Lake said no to soccer. Oh wait, Greenwood Lake said yes to soccer. And it goes, goes on and on and on, you know, so what I'm trying to say is I think, I think, I think conversation is important. I think keeping in touch with, with the other AEDs is very important.
Oh, I, I, we've been, we've definitely been keeping in touch with the other AEDs. I don't, I don't think our decision is really based on what they're doing though. I think our, our decision is based on the safety and the playability of our field. And, you know, I mean, obviously that's number one. You know, and, but we are keeping in contact. Chris and I have both had emails with several schools. And I think they're just in the process of the same thing we are. They're still making decisions and they're, they're, they haven't made the ultimate decision just like we haven't yet until maybe today.
Yep. So what I want to chime in here is that the athletic directors actually have a Google Doc per sport as a, that says what sports each district is planning to play at, at what level. Uh, and the superintendents have access to that as well. In addition, the superintendents of the county have gone around and shared what they kind of thought. Um, nothing is set in stone because the board meetings have all been happening last week, this week and next week. So things are still up in the air and we have been, both Bill and Chris and myself have been asked to keep that information private until the school district can go public, right? But we have an idea of what is going to be recommended to the boards of education in the districts all across section nine, as well as the district specifically in Orange. Um, and what I will say is there are at least five or six districts in Orange County that do not plan on having modified sports.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Matt, you're next. We'll go in the same order.
I'm all for sports. Um, it's being played. It's being played everywhere. Basketball's being played. Parents are signing waivers. They're making it work. There's spending time with, of kids from different school districts, different areas. They're doing it. There's an interest out there. Parents will sign the waivers. They want their kids to play. Sports is an elective thing. Like Sue said, it makes no sense between that and the school. I totally get that, you know? And to me, if this opens the door for uh after-school activities for band and stuff like that, I'm all for that. You know, we should do that also because it doesn't make sense. The having sports and not having band, not having, you know, after-school activities. It doesn't make sense. But if it, this opens the door for that, I'm for it. As far as the field thing, I'm not buying the whole field thing because like spring sports, they're playing soccer. They play soccer every year in the spring. Snow will melt. If the field is not able to play, you don't play. Find another field to play on, whatever it is. They make it work. I guarantee everybody's going to make it work. Whether you have to play with, away one day, double up another day because we had sun, whatever it is, it will work. And I guarantee the interest in this community is going to have soccer as a spring sport. Definitely baseball and every sport. And, and there is a big interest for basketball, like, because they're playing. That whole group of kids are playing. They're all in the same car, going back and forth. They're playing. Aaron will probably tell you more about it, but, you know. And he would also know as far as anybody getting hurt playing spring sports soccer-wise on the fields, that's, I've never seen it in all my years, you know, with soccer, baseball. It's just not there. So I'm for sports.
Did Sue disappear or did she freeze?
No, I forgot I was muted. Um, TJ, you're up.
Um, first, I just want to say thank you to uh Mr. Ferry, Mr. Crum and LaRoche. Um, thank you for staying in touch with the other schools and having these conversations and these Google docs between each other. Um, listen, we have our school nurse, we have our athletic director sitting here and stating that these fields are going to be dangerous to use uh this early in the year. I mean, a child's safety is of more importance. Um, next, the, the possibility of having to close down our school or have a bus driver get sick, you know, all these different things that are major contributing factors to keeping our district open. I mean, listen, at the end of the day, a school district's job is to educate. Okay, sports, clubs, all of that, those are simply extras. So my concern right now is we need to keep our district open so our students, our children continue to learn. And if by playing a sport or a club is going to cause our school to close, a possibility of a closing, that's not a risk I'm willing to take. If a parent wants their child to play a sport, sign them up for a town team. Sign them up with one of these private leagues. But as a school district, we're here to educate our students and if we're going to risk that by opening our buildings, I'm not okay with that. Um, I mean, we don't use our town fields until April. You know, there, there's a reason for that. Um, I don't think we should have anything that is inside of the school. If we can't have chorus, if we can't have a normal gym class, the kids need eighteen, twelve feet, we can't do band. I'm never going to agree to them being in a gym and playing a sport. So I think all high risk, in my opinion, is out. Especially anything that's indoors. Um, I agree with being able to do the cross-country. I agree with when the time is right and the field conditions are proper to do softball and to do baseball. Um, cross-country, I don't know if it's already. Um, another concern is we're already facing a cut in our budget through the state. We just repaired these fields. Um, I don't want these fields turning around and getting destroyed again because we're using them when they're sopping wet. You know, Rob or whoever had the, the information here, what would it cost for us to repair these fields if they get destroyed again because we were playing on them too soon? You know, it's, we're going to potentially be messing up a field that we just paid money for and then what, we're going to turn around and spend more money to fix it and we're already facing a budget cut? I mean, there's so many aspects that you need to look at with this. Um, Sarah, what was, how, what would the approximate cost be to repair the fields from playing on them too early?
Rob, do you address that, what the yearly maintenance is and then what you anticipate the increase cross could potentially be?
Every year we put about eight to fifteen thousand dollars into the field uh trying to fix low spots, uh top dressing and seeding. If you go on the fields when they're wet, you're going to have, you're going to tear up a lot of root systems. The seeding costs will probably be closer to twenty-five thousand. Uh, sports turf seed is very expensive and it takes a long time for the root systems to redevelop.
Okay, so, thank you. Um, my overall, just to wrap it back up, again, a school district is here to teach our children, to be able to lead our country in the future. All right, these are the people that we're going to be relying on when we're older. We need to teach. Our concern needs to be to teach. It's not to play sports. It's not for clubs. That is all extras and I agree that that is something that we definitely want to get back to. But right now we need to worry about our priorities and what the purpose of a school is. We have our athletic director sitting here stating that it's not safe. We have our school nurse sitting here for, she's been in the field many years. You know, she's saying that it's, it's not safe. It's not recommended. We have to worry about other school districts and how they're handling COVID and how they're cohorting. And if they're up to the same level that we are, um, possibly being down a bus driver, being down a teacher, you know, a coach. There's too many moving factors in this. A possibility of twenty-five thousand dollars to reseed a field. At the end of the day, I say again, we're here to teach. We're here to educate and if you want your kids on the team, sign them up on a town league if uh you feel that that's necessary. Because again, we're cohorting as well. W- w- one team gets exposed, how many classrooms are we going to have to shut down? And how is that fair to the other parents that they are comfortable with sending their kids to school because they're in a cohort? That's uh, that's my opinion on it. Sorry if I'm a long-winded.
Did you answer the first two questions? I don't know. I forgot what the first two questions are now. I'll move on right over to Aaron.
Uh, yeah, just like Matt, I mean, I'm all for sports. I've gone through, I, I coached soccer, baseball. I'm coaching basketball right now. Um, we went through an entire baseball season from July to October. Didn't have any issues. We went through a soccer season from September to November. There weren't any issues. There's five hundred kids playing rec basketball in Warwick right now. Um, I'm not any issue that I know of so far. Um, for soccer and baseball, everyone was playing against other towns the whole time. Um, I'm confused on like why basketball over in two weeks, why soccer has to start on March first, what, like, I don't, nothing is set yet. So why are the seasons already defined by time? Like, basketball can start right now. If there's other, if other schools want to start playing, start the season now. Move the next season back, but the fields aren't going to be ready. Play baseball in the middle of June. Like, why is everything so defined as this has to start on March first and this has to start on May first?
So that, all of that, Aaron, is determined by section nine. That is not up to each district. We are, you're literally not allowed to play sports behind, for a certain date. You're not allowed to start after a certain time. The, at section nine has rules and, and determines those dates for us.
But those rules are for a normal year. Like, why are those rules not being discussed? Like, who, like, who's talking to section nine about all this stuff?
Uh, the athletic directors sit on the council at section.
And has that been brought up to the, to section nine? Like, why is the season structure not being talked about changing?
So they did change the season. That's why fall is in March.
I understand that, but I'm saying, why can't fall be in April? Like, so, you know, field concern should not be, like, obviously if it's raining out, we're going to play soccer. Like, seeing the field is going to be frozen is not a reason not to have a soccer. So like, what I'm saying is like, why can't stuff just be moved around more? Everything's getting moved around constantly.
So Chris or Bill, you guys attend those section nine meetings. Do you want to address that? And then uh Julie, I didn't know if you wanted to chime in about those discussions as well.
Uh, the schedules are set by the section nine. Like I said, this is the certain days this, um, that they have to go and when they have to finish by so that they can have the other sports. Um, they can't mix around. If you have baseball seasons and soccer seasons, those are all separate on that one. So they moved around as best they can and fit in at all levels, uh, including the uh JV and varsity to fit the seasons in. Um, so this is at all levels in a section, um, whenever it's the state approved the sports. That's when they had to go ahead and go ahead and try to get everything in before the end of school uh to give that time. So they weren't mixing seasons at all.
Right. And but has there been any discussion about changing those seasons now that on February first, sports were allowed?
There was no, uh, uh, according to when we talked about it, there's no, there's not a lot of wiggle room to change the sports. Um, and most of the decisions, none of the athletic directors bring this up. It's all based on the section nine and the state's decision that come above us.
Yeah, I mean, I think that means, I don't know who has to revisit that, but I'm just saying, like, if you have February, March, April, May, June to play every season of every sport. to play every season of every sport, like the timeline should have been changed in general anyway. But like I said, for me, any kid that's going to play sports is already playing sports. So the stuff about mixing cohorts, it's, it's already happening. I, I, that, just none of, none of the stuff that we're saying to me is a reason to not do it. The kids want to play, especially for the eighth graders, like this might be the last time they play sports for their school. And you know, it's important that we try to, you know, find a way to make it happen, you know, I, I, I don't, saying that a field is going to be frozen is not a reason for them to not play. The mixing cohort thing is not a, a thing. Any one person can close the school. We've just, we've determined that already. And, and you know, like I said, everyone that is going to play, has already played, is playing currently on multiple teams with multiple people against multiple other kids. It's, you know, and through my experience from July till now, I haven't heard of one issue of COVID-related anything to sports.
I just wanted to just say from a legal perspective, I think it's important to begin this discussion now, but there's been so much change that happens literally weekly. And while this, this section nine did change the seasons and I don't know that they're inclined to change them again, but I also don't know that they won't. Every day we breathe, then something changes in another direction. Guidance gets updated and reissued and the conversation that you're having now may also be a little different than even what it is in two or three weeks. Also, the different rules and regulations required by section nine, the New York State Health Department, the local health department, they embed these different levels of rules and restrictions on us that don't exist in regular town teams and in others, in other contexts that do exist in the school context where things are much more rigidly guided by these different rules that it, it makes it very hard to reasonably foresee what is and what is not right now. And even just the winter precipitation, as it was mentioned before, we, we don't know, we could be seeing snow all through March for all we know. This is a weird winter. We had like five years in a row of almost no snow and then look at what the predicted forecast is for this week. I, I think that for basketball, somebody I think said, why, why not play basketball? The season is like, what, two and a half weeks left and you have to practice for a certain amount of time before you can even play a game. And to the best of my knowledge, I really don't know of districts that have modified sports right now. I've seen a lot of approval resolutions and they mostly reference freshman JV and varsity. To the best of my recollection, I don't recall drafting anything referencing modified. So I do wonder to what extent you would have people to play against. And I don't represent the whole county, but, but a lot of the districts, I don't believe did approve modified. That being said, it is an important thing for, for students to participate in things beyond just academics, but with in mind the safety of the academic program being paramount, that it's important that the kids get their education. And education happens in a sport, in social setting too, but the, the fear of the possibility of closing the whole school down because of sports, it's really a, a cost benefit analysis. And I think that's why Mrs. Haddon had been saying outdoor sports are more advisable and they're also more recommended from all the county department commissioners of health. Because the less ventilation and the closer the contact, the higher the risk. And that's the reason that each county is sending out these high-risk sports. Notice documents of, of risks and requiring waivers and adherence to codes of conduct. The rules are just papered with restrictions and qualifications. And in two weeks, they could take away from us even that latitude to participate in sports for all we know. I doubt that that will happen based on what's happening at the state level, but it's just everything is in such a state of flux. It's really hard to predict what will be even for the rest of the school year right now.
Yep. And just for, just one quick reference, the Orange County Department of Health has issued three different emails to superintendents just since Friday with changes to the sports expectations at the county level.
The whole conversation doesn't, I mean, when, when, when is the decision be, have to be made by a district if they're going to participate or not in modified sports? Like this whole conversation irrelevant because we have no one to play against. So like, is there a deadline for that?
So most, most districts are having the conversation now about winter sports. They haven't even made a decision about fall sports or spring sports. So they will.
They're having this, they're having a discussion on the sport that ends in two weeks?
Yes. Because high school sports, Aaron, can practice over breaks, whereas modified sports cannot. So they actually have, they do have two weeks left and they had conditioning practices in January and the rules on, they have to have a certain number of practices before they have a game. They've actually been having conditioning practices and those count. So they're able to actually have a game or practices over break and, and so on.
I mean, that section nine should have to revisit everything that they're doing because it doesn't make any sense that everything is to such a set date and with the way that this whole thing is going down now anyway. So I, like I said, if there's no one to play against, there's no one to play against. None of this makes a difference.
That's maybe just a winter thing. It might change in the fall too and spring. All we know is that section nine determined that the season would be starting on the first of February and it ends at the end of February, March first. Section one, for example, goes through March fourteenth with a one-week overlap with fall two and winter. But section nine decided to stick to the much more abbreviated winter season. And I don't know why, I just know what they did. So that's why it is good to think about planning ahead for when we might be able to engage meaningfully and safely in activities that will be good for people's social, emotional wellbeing and also can be done with a better level of safety than what might happen for a two-week period right now. It's very frustrating. I, I get it. It, it's just, there's so much flux and then I mean, it could have been a vote a week ago and then the guidance changed anyway. So we would have been issuing new consent forms. Just the whole ridiculousness, it's the pandemic.
Section nine, section nine should also realize that, that started outdoor sport on March first is not realistic at all. And to say that they're not going to, to, to adjust the way the seasons work, it, it, this doesn't make any sense. Like if you can't start it till April first, you can't start till April first. Like there, there's got to, there should be more flexibility than there is right now.
I, I think what, I think the intent behind it and execution may be different, but the intent behind it was to try to hold all of the seasons just shortened as opposed to if they had fall and spring and spring. Well, if you do soccer and track, you'd have to choose between the two, whereas with a shortened season, you could potentially still do cross-country and do track, or you could still do soccer and do, but baseball. That was, that was what I believe is their idea behind the shortened seasons.
They would then reconsider even shorter seasons. That makes sense.
Just to interject, that's something that nobody has said. June ends, all sports end, I believe, June eleventh because regions start. It might be the Monday that the last day that you can play, but everything is scheduled around regions because this is the decision for modified JV and varsity. And regions trumps everything. Everything must end before regions. Just throwing that out there, just as to why it ends mid-June.
And Bill or Chris, can you guys share, how many practices do you have to have before you can hold a game and how many, they, how many practices must there be? Can you share that? Just that number?
Depending on the sport, summer eight, summer ten.
Soccer is ten.
Should change in this situation.
I, I, I want to say that I agree with Aaron in, in the respect that like when section nine came out with that date of like March first, what, it was unrealistic in, in the soccer sense because it just, it just doesn't look like you can start practices or have games in like March twentieth. And I understand what he's saying and I know, I understand. But I also understand like this is what they're, this is what they're giving us and, and then we have to make a decision on that. But I, I, I do agree with you. Like it just was unrealistic in that, in that aspect.
Aaron, do you have anything else?
Thank you.
We can revisit. Don't worry, Aaron. I'll go back around. Michelle?
Sorry. Yeah, you know, I'm in agreement with, you know, with having sports. Just one question, because I, you know, we know we're having a a very cold winter season and I'm sure it's not the first. What was done in the past when we had a season like this? So that we, you know, do we, do we cancel soccer in the past or what accommodations did we make?
So those are fall sports, Michelle? So they usually occur in September. So there's no accommodation that's needed because the field is not.
Oh, okay. And can't, we can't do any indoor soccer?
I do not recommend indoor sports. Also, most of the facilities that do have indoor have already been taken by the high schools.
So the, so we won't have a facility to play in if, if we did have the option of doing the indoor sports? Or if we went ahead with decision.
Correct. Correct. Most of the high schools have already signed up with the facilities so that they can have their varsity seasons.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to reiterate, reiterate what Matt and Aaron had said. You know, rec sports are going on, cohorts are meeting. You know, I just feel at this point, we've been following the guidelines. There's a lot of conflicting guidelines that are happening. You know, we, I think we've gone above and beyond, you know, following state recommendations, Department of Health recommendations. And we still see, you know, spikes in the community. You know, I just feel like more and more we're just taking things away from the kids. And you know, if we're talking about health, exercise really helps to boost the immune system. So why would we take away exercise from them? More and more we're limiting our children into bettering their health and keeping them more quarantined at home. It, it's, it's very frustrating, extremely frustrating.
And anything else, Michelle? I don't know if you're done. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, you know, I, you, Aaron, with the, with the section nine, I mean, it's ridiculous, you know, the amount of time that they give to, you know. Yeah, I, I think it's ridiculous. They extended rec sports. I don't know why they didn't extend it for the schools. Sorry, my dog's going crazy. Is your dog barking too loud?
I think her dog hurt your dog. All right, Michelle, it, it's, it is a super frustrating topic. I, I don't mean to ask if you're done or not. I'm just trying to check in. This is just difficult.
I'm going to mute it because the dog's barking. He's going to go for a while. My husband just came home, so.
All right, I will come back to you after. We'll, we'll talk a little bit and when the dog comes down, we can come back to you. That leaves Barbara.
So Sarah said something that was, it kind of clicked and made it all kind of, because I was on the fence a little bit. I know sports are so important, but we must prioritize in-person teaching above all else. And I just feel really strongly about how can we do one thing and not the other? And, you know, nothing inside. I don't, I don't think that that's, I don't think it's time. I don't think it's time yet. You know, and I know there's sports happening in other communities, whatever. I'm not a big sports person, so I'm not really sure what the, whatever it is, rec, whatever it's called, but so let them continue playing wherever they're playing. I just don't think it's quite time yet for us to be doing things inside. I appreciate Mr. Cron, Mr. Ferry and Mrs. La Roche, all of your input. You know, safety of course, and then we have to consider wear and tear and that's always an expense as well. But safety really is my biggest concern, always, always, always. I'm good with baseball, softball and track. Very confused with all of the different fall, spring, the dates and whatever else, but and cross-country, go for it, but nothing inside at this time.
Thank you, Barbara. I'm just going to go back to me and you, Kwan, at this moment. I'll go first because we started with the question, at least I started with the questions on the slide and I have more to say and questions and again, for me, fundamentals of guidance conflicting is always a, a, a hard thing. I have reflected on this decision thinking about a different child of mine who was the sport, not and how it would have impacted him. So I, I do go back and forth. But at the end of the day, the decision gets made based on all the students and not just the kids that pay, play sports. So when it comes to the soccer part, I'm, I'm very conflicted. I am a huge soccer fan, but if, I, I don't agree with bringing them inside because if soccer was played inside as a practice, it wouldn't be a moderate risk sport. It would become a high-risk sport because of the contact if you follow those rules. Just for practicing. For a school, it's not as easy to switch fields around. And right now, I've watched six different board meetings in the last week. School districts are typically K-12 and they're putting their emphasis on the high school seasons. And Warwick rented out space every day from three, three to five in one of the dome facility. Like there's different things. They're concentrating on the high school and the modified is going on the back burner from what I've seen. And, and not all of them are making such solid decisions. Warwick came out with no modified for football. And to me, Warwick is the biggest football town around and they're not playing modified football as of their board meeting the other day. So that, that was kind of telling and a lot of that I'm sure has to do with the field conditions, being able to practice, being able to get indoor space. So i- it's just, it's a conflicting thing. I get that the kids are playing everywhere. They've been playing all along. Great for the parents that have been doing that to keep their normal going. But decisions get made on, on all the kids and the education comes first. So I personally would skip the soccer. Just because of the timeframe, if it started later, it might have been an easier doable thing. We just put more money into the field this past summer. I don't even know if we could have played on the field this past, this past fall because a big portion of it was reseeded. But you know, I, the softball, the baseball, the track, all get to work later on and with the, with the dates at least. I'd hate to start a soccer season and disappoint the kids. And you know, that sense of mental health is also, you know, who wants to disappoint them that it snowed two feet in March and they can't play anywhere? Or there's no teams to play. But you know, even revisiting this decision, putting it on hold and, and coming back for a meeting in two weeks even, as we see what other districts are doing. But you know, that, that whole inside sports thing is just March first and soccer are, you know, the league in town even doesn't move outside till mid-March, March fifteenth, twentieth, twenty-fifth, depends on the weather each year. So for me, I am all about the other sports, but soccer is a sticking point because of how can the kids practice outside with snow on the ground? Like we don't know, we can't predict, we're not the weatherman. Like, we don't know, we can't predict, we're not the weatherman. And exercise should be the priority, and if kids can start to be together, they should have started with a gym class that benefited all students, because that's the equity part. For me, is, is important that the equity goes across the board for all the kids. But anyway, Yukon, can you finish up your part? We kind of started out early.
I thought I was finished, but what do you, regarding to what, precisely?
More clearly, what, Sarah, you want to go?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I think that, that the question is just, we started talking about a specific slide, and then I took the slides off, and it kind of became just an, people are sharing just an overall feeling about continuing with sports in general. And that will help guide the rest of the discussion, really, to see how far we need to go with it. So just overall thoughts on sports, my recommendations versus all sports, et cetera.
Well, I, I always take Sarah's recommendation. You know, I, I don't take it lightly, I, I think she's, she's very smart, and she works hard, and she has the experience, you know, going on the day-to-day happenings of the district. But, you know, we're not, you know, th- this is, this is happening because of the virus. But we're not talking about not having soccer because of the virus. We're talking about mainly not having soccer because of field conditions. Now, that's something that we could work on. Now, we're trying to make, we're trying to make points to to say, let's not play soccer because of field conditions. It's not about the virus, it's about the field. Kids are gonna slip on ice, kids are gonna be playing on snow. Yes, we, we don't know that. Okay, we don't know if it's gonna snow three inches tomorrow, if it's gonna snow six inches, we don't know that, you know. Kids, kids are gonna play sports regardless, snow, ice. You know, one of the best times I had playing football was playing football in the snow and rain. We used to pray for that, pray for rain and snow. Anyway, I'm all for sports. You know, if, if you want to talk about, you know, this, this already been classified as a medium-risk sport, this is not high-risk. We're not talking about high-risk. You know, and I understand that our schools are here to teach kids education. Sports are also teaching kids. That's why we have coaches, we have gym teachers. That's a big part. You can't get rid of it. It's a huge part. Kids are waiting for soccer, kids are waiting for sports. You know, to tell them, listen, we, you can't play soccer in modified because there's no grass, or you might slip and get hurt. No way. Kids are gonna slip and get hurt. It's part of growing up. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say I'm for sports.
Julie, will we need an additional waiver if we've shared, if, if we shared concerns about student safety and we proceed? Will we need an additional waiver, sharing those concerns of the district before parents sign up?
I think it would be prudent to put forth all of the conditions of which we are aware that may be out of our control under the same context of informed consent. And I also think we should get a weigh-in from NYSER on what they feel from a liability perspective is defensible, should we have slip and falls on our property. I think that's a super important part of this. We could discuss that more in executive session if, if the board wishes, from legal counsel perspective.
Um, I have a question to, to the rest of the board. We can choose to make a decision tonight for the summer, for the, the spring sports, and, and make that rock-solid, and come back and meet in two weeks from tonight, and see if there's gonna be other teams. That's all I'm saying, is just to see if there's other teams. I'd hate to tell the kids it's moving forward and then take it away. Because they can practice, but they can't, you know, there's one team to play. I, I don't know, I just worry about that side of it for the kids. And seeing if there's gonna be teams just might make a little bit of sense of, you know, I, I don't know what you guys think about it, I know they want to play, I get it, they've been playing. But, what happens if the school, if all these schools put all the effort into the, the high school sports? And there isn't anybody to play? Then great, yeah, we told them yes, but then there's nobody to play. Like, does anybody see that as an issue for the kids?
I, I don't think there's a, if there's no one to play, there's no one to play. But if every district's gonna sit there and go, we'll wait and see what the other districts are doing, and then no one ends up making the decision. Then, you know, it's not gonna go anywhere.
That, it's, it's a valid point, they just all, everything I watched.
The community needs to understand that if there's no one to play, there's no one to play. It's, we, not, nothing we can do about that part, you know?
Right, I don't worry about the community, I just worry about those kids. Chris?
I was, I was told that if other teams do drop out, because I did bring up this point, if teams do drop out, they will make as much accommodation as possible between scheduling and other schools that are having programs to get as many possible games in. There's always emails sending out saying, this school is looking for this opportunity to have practices. Now, you still have to follow the regulations on how many days you have between games and all that. But it would just open up to traveling a lot further distances and playing schools that are much larger than us as well. And sometimes that hurts to play the bigger, bigger schools when you have such a small program as well. But the section nine did promise that they will make as much accommodation as possible to get as many games during the seasons.
Within the realm of the state guidance on the ability to travel outside of region. So there are very specific guidance in the, I believe it's the State Department of Health guidance about travel. And you cannot travel to certain regions if their rate of positivity is higher than yours and non-adjoning regions, et cetera. So there is guidance specific to that. But yes, Chris is right, they will work with us to try and fit in games that are within the realms of the guidance.
Okay.
So at this point, I, I, uh, the.
Sarah, can I, can I just finish? I just had something to say. So the other board members, there's definitely, I think it's a four-three board, soccer's, want to move forward, it's fine. Can we go on the point of, of not playing soccer indoors, just to make it a unified board decision for the other ones that are disagreeing? Due to the COVID concerns of transmission? Because that is a concern for board members. For some board members at least, of at, at least trying to make the compromise of moving forward in a, in a positive direction as a group. Because if we, they, they they could end up playing most of March inside with no games. It's great for conditioning, but they could also be playing those conditioning things in the, in the parking lot, too. Like, there's ways to work around it, I'm sure the coaches can both attest to ways to do drills and things, possibly that way. And, and then it becomes, at least with Sarah's, we're also supporting Sarah's decision, it's just, I, I get, this is hard, but we should try to come to compromises sometime. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm just throwing it out there. Feel free to comment. Or not.
Um, I have a comment. I, I mean, for me personally, I'm not opposed to having practices indoors. I, I believe that, you know, there can be creative ways to keep the social distance. They're required to wear a mask, we just purchased the MRF-13 in our, you know, school. You know, for better ventilation. I think that we can take the necessary protocols and then the guidelines and, and make it happen if we have to have soccer indoors.
Is a moderate-risk sport required to have a mask on if it's indoors? Julie? If she's here somewhere?
I believe that masks are supposed to, they should be worn at all times when they can be worn. Depending upon what the specific sport is, it may or may not be safe or practicable to wear a mask. I am not sure where soccer lands on that. But what I do know is there are a lot of places that are not letting any sports be played, that cannot be played with masks on. And if masks need breaks, like if people need mask breaks, then they go to the sideline and get a water break. I know that's generally how section one is operating. I'm not sure about section nine, but the NISPA, the state-level guidelines from the New York State Public High School Athletics Association are a little different than the more specific guidelines that are coming down section by section, and sometimes from the Health Department, too. I would need to look specifically into soccer, I'm not sure if the level of intensity might mitigate against the use of masks in a safe way because of the restriction on airflow, I'm, I'm just not sure. Been looking into it, though.
Okay, I'm just, if it was my child wearing a mask inside playing versus in maybe the parking lot playing the drills, I would take the parking lot, but that's me. But I just see, I don't know. Anybody else have anything to say? I don't want to put anybody on the spot, so if you do, just speak up.
I agree, mask, why would you want to be running around inside wearing a mask? I, I, I don't understand that either, Sue, so I happen to agree with you on that one, I would.
I mean, I agree, I, I'd rather them not wear masks. But if we're going to play inside and, you know, we're trying to prevent the transmission, there are creative ways that we can move forward. You know, why would, I mean, my question would be, why would you wear it outside when you have the proper ventilation?
Right, that's what I, that's what I, right.
You have to follow any guidance from the Health Department, they have rules about every single sport and type of sport, and masks versus no masks, physical distancing, types of practices, et cetera, it's all spelled out for the athletic directors and for us. That's actually not part of discussion or based on opinions or professional thought, that's all in the guidance.
So that's not something that we would be able to say, yep, you're outside, no mask, it, it would be based on the guidance, right? Am I understanding that correctly? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have any final thoughts?
Yeah. If, if we go and we start doing sports in the building, well then, we need to stop looking at this as being a sport parent and be looking at this as a board member that represents everybody. For kids that are in choir, or kids that are in band, or some of these clubs, like, that's where they get their symphilement as an athlete does playing sport. So how are we going to allow this to be happening now inside the school, but then tell a child that they can't play their trumpet, or that they can't sing with the choir to their play? There's way too many moving pieces to this. And we can't just represent in one portion or one group of our school. I think if we're able to do this outside, well then, you know, it's possible for us to be able to do the sports. Maybe in the future, we can look at holding the choir or the band out in the parking lot or something. But to do it inside and then say that the choir and the band and these other groups can't meet, that's like being a bully to these other kids, it'd be like, we could do it, but you can't. Like, that just makes no sense to me.
Can I just comment on that? TJ, I agree with you, I mean, I, it's definitely conflicting guidance, but that's out of our hands. That's guidance that's coming from the Department of Health. You know, there are lacks with the sports, and then there are a little more strict with what band, you know, bands and choir can do. You know, maybe with us kind of okaying the sports, it will open the door for choir and band to meet. In a, you know, in a more conducive, you know, way. So, I mean, as of now, they're giving us a little bit more leeway with the sports. Whereas the band and choir, that's kind of out of our hands, that's, you know, DOH guidance. That's not something we're deciding on.
Okay, um, my final thoughts, I don't know if anybody else, my final thoughts is, though, usually I go with you, with two athletic directors and Sarah say no. Board members say yes, it's a board decision, it comes to a vote, there'll be, I was just trying to come up with some kind of compromise so it was good for everybody and not so splitting our board. But I tried, I, I just, I, I do see the, the issue of lack of equity to the other kids. And they can't do things, and, and it, it is hard, I, I understand that some guidance has loosened up. But the kids that want the other things don't, don't get them. And at the end of the day, our decision is about all students, I agree with what TJ said. And in that sense, when you take out, take it from that particular side, it, it's not, it's not universal, the guidelines didn't change universally. And our decision is based on a select group of kids. So i- it's very, it's a tough decision.
So I, I definitely have board consensus and, and thoughts, and I've taken lots of notes tonight. Can I get some specific thoughts about testing requirements? Should we be testing our athletes as we move a committee forward and, and they proceed with creating our athletic plan? Can I get, like I said, just need some thoughts on incorporating test protocols as a part of our requirements? And board member's thoughts on that?
Sure, I'm okay with testing. Yukon?
How, how are we gonna test kids? Are all, all the other schools going to test?
I don't know that all schools are going to test, it's recommended that students test. There are districts that are doing it weekly, there are districts that doing daily tests, actually. And there are, I'm sure there are districts that are not doing testing. In terms of your question of how would we do the test, there would be two options. One, the school would do testing, probably, some of the districts are working with Horizon Medical, and we would work, I would also suggest working with Horizon Medical and having them come in once a week, or sending our students there once a week to get tested, or their parents bring them there, or they can go to their own pediatrician or their own facility and bring the results in. They, it would be up to them.
Well, my, my concern is just flooding the doctor's office, you know, weekly for, for tests. Just like when we closed schools last time, when I had to make an appointment for my son to speak to the doctor. You know, he didn't get an appointment until a week later. And, and this is just a Zoom call, just, just to, you know, get the okay, get the clear. So I just don't know how it would work. The athletes can test every week or every, every game, or, you know, we, we definitely need to talk about this a little bit more, we, we need more, more intel on this.
Um, ju- just to give a little bit of background on the testing, there are different specific recommendations that have been made by different counties regarding testing. The higher risk of the sport, the more important it may be. There are some statistics about, about 30% of individuals who are COVID-positive being completely asymptomatic but spreaders of the virus, so those are the most important to be able to capture. And there may be consideration for conditioning testing on the positivity rate in the county versus the statewide positivity rate versus other indicators. I know that the Putnam County Department of Health issued a guidance document saying if the rate of positivity in the county is less than 3%, it's completely optional from their perspective. If the rate is more than 3%, but less than 5%, testing was recommended by them. And if greater than 5%, testing was quote, highly recommended by them. And that's where both UCIT and Putnam County sit at this time, above 5%. But you might sit at a lower number in just a few weeks. You could craft a plan that does condition the testing based upon positivity rates. And also, a very big consideration to be given at this point is, to what extent is there another, or more than one other more transmissible variant that may be out there that is much more contagious? that may be out there that is much more contagious? And the testing may catch that before it spreads like wildfire within the school system. And I know that at the end of the day, the most important thing is to keep the school open for education. So that's the reason that generally you'll hear that it's a NYMER, New York State Municipal Insurance Reciprocal Best Practice to have a testing plan, but not necessarily mandated by the county health department or the state. But there are definitely parameters, and I think this is something that warrants more discussion as we see what the next several weeks bring even. It's an important topic and there's a lot of considerations to be had.
Thanks, Julie. Next, Matt, testing, sorry.
I'm not for a testing for kids. Like, if someone's sick, go get tested. As far as coaches wise, I could see, you know, if Sarah's worried about a coach, you know, coaching and then teaching, if that coach, you know, if you want to have him have a test or her have a test, I'm for that, you know? It's up to them. Or if you don't want teachers coaching at all, you want to have volunteers do it so this way you don't worry about the spread. I mean, there's other ways around that aspect of it.
To clarify, there is contractual rules about that, Matt. We do have to offer it to staff. That is a contract thing.
Isn't it? You offer the staff first.
I'm sorry.
You offer this staff first, and if they don't want to do it, then it goes, correct?
Correct.
So I'm not for testing for kids unless they're sick.
Okay. TJ?
I think if we want them to be in it, then to have them be tested because you're also protecting the other students within the classroom who with parents are opting to not have their kids do town leagues or do school leagues. If we don't, then why do we even bother doing cohorts? I think we're just throwing a lot of stuff out the window here for a practice of what we've been doing, what we've set in place that has clearly been working. Yes, we did have to shut down the school, but that was after an extended break during the holiday. We were families and everybody were gathering. But other than that, I think our reopening plan and what we've done thus far has been very successful. And we're kind of just going and selling a monkey wrench in here at the end of the year, and I feel like it's going to affect us negatively. So I say, yeah, if you want your kids to play sports and then have them tested.
Just I echo before we move on to the next one, as I've been doing intermittently, and I apologize, I'm trying not to interrupt. But I do anticipate something to what TJ alluded to, that we are going to have parents requesting to go remote based on this decision. And we would need to accommodate that, even though we're supposed to do it a quarter only. I would feel that that would be the right thing to do for families should they choose to go to remote based on this decision.
Thanks, Sarah. Aaron? Sorry, I went backwards.
I don't think the testing is necessary unless there's a reason for it. Because I don't see this affecting as much as some other people do. It's already happening, so. And Sarah, where are you letting people go? Remote, well, quarter anyway, aren't we?
What? I'm sorry, I didn't catch the very end.
People have went remote, not on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, so we try to work with individual families. We try to counsel and work with them, see what the problems are, fix them. But ultimately, remote or in person is up to the family. We try to keep them to the end of the quarter, but there have been some, a few examples of mid-quarter switches based on specific circumstances of that family.
Barbara?
I'm all for testing.
Thank you. And Michelle, I believe you're, wait, yeah. I think everybody just moved once. Michelle? You were there, now you're there.
I don't think testing is necessary. However, though, I think if there are a majority of parents who would like it, then I'm fine with that. But I don't think it should be a requirement or something held as a requirement in order for their child to play sports.
Okay. I think I, I heard from everybody. And just to be clear, the, the testing part for me, I will go out on a limb here and say it. It's, um, it, it, it kind of means sports gets it both ways. They get to play, they don't have to do anything to require it, and it does nothing for the group, the part of the cohort that has different beliefs. And again, the decision's based on all the students in the building. I wouldn't, I would prefer not to test, and if there weren't sports, it wouldn't be an issue. But the only, it shouldn't be the only option is if you're not comfortable with no testing is to take your child out of the in-person instruction. Again, it's about the education, not about the sports. So if that alleviated some, some parents on the non-sport side concerns, then I would think kids, people that had kids that wanted to play sports wouldn't be as concerned about having a test. My decisions are based on both sides. So I just wanted to say that. Go ahead, Sarah.
I don't think there's actually anything else I need right now. And I have an idea of where I need to go. Well, we're going to form a, let me just make sure. Oh, transportation, I guess, is one other thing that, that might be the last thing we discuss. Is the transportation. My recommendation being that it be to and from away games only and not provide transportation home after practice due to the concerns specifically for the transportation department and if a bus driver would get quarantined. But I, I would need the board's input on that before moving forward with the committee. And I think that's the last thing I'm going to need.
Sure, I'm going to go on a different route this time, and we're going to start with Barbara. I'll go back the other way.
So for the record, I feel like there's entirely too much that we have to sit here and figure out for them to have to play sports. But transportation only, back and forth. I agree with Sarah.
Thank you. Aaron?
Oh, yeah, I agree with Sarah for this part, just for away games and pick up the practice.
And what? I didn't hear the last part, Aaron.
How do you have the kids picked up after practice?
So wait, it's back and forth to games only, right? That's what, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we're discussing, back and forth to games only.
Yeah, I didn't understand what Aaron said at the end.
Right, that's why I asked him to say it again. He said, and have parents pick up.
Okay, I thought I missed something.
And have parents pick up from practice.
Pick them up, got you. All right, thank you.
Michelle?
Yep, same here. I agree.
Okay. Matt?
I agree. I'm sure parents will be fine with that, you know, picking up from home games and practices. I don't see a problem with that.
Okay. Yuquan?
Yes, me too. I agree with Sarah.
Okay, thank you. I agree with that. And I, my appeal goes out to any parent that can help a child that doesn't have a ride. I, I thank you to please help them because equity, again, working parents, kids, there are kids that may not be able to have a ride. So if everybody could work out helping out those kids, it's very important.
Yep. We will, we do the survey to determine interest in sports within the next couple of weeks. That's what we'll be working on. And when we do so, that will be one of our survey questions to see if they would need support with transportation or if they ask, as well as would they be willing to help with transportation of students? So we will add that into our questions.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I just make one comment? Okay. I mean, I know we mentioned about equity regarding the sports and, you know, the activities that they have in schools such as band and choir. And, you know, I just want the community to know that, for me at least, I am not basing my decision on, I think sports is better than the choir. It is what the DOH guidelines are allowing us to do. If they allowed band to me, I would be all for it, same with choir. So I'm not favoring one over, over the other. So I just kind of, you know, wanted to just make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
No, Michelle, I, I didn't think, I wasn't trying to point out there or say that it was you in, in particular. I'm just saying in general, we're talking about basically kind of catering to one side here. That was my concern. So I, I apologize. I didn't, I don't want you to think I was just, I was picking you out or anything.
No, no, it wasn't. But I think most districts are facing the same struggle that we're having. It's, it's the conflicting guidelines, you know? And, you know, when we met with our legislators, that was one of the issues that we had brought up, that they are adjusting. So hopefully, you know, we get some more cohesive guidelines across the board.
Right, I, I agree. I started this with my difficulty rationalizing the different guidelines for different sets. And again, I'm not picking on one person. I just, I feel for both sides. I'm, I'm trying to look at both sides to make a decision and the different things. It's just, I, I try. I have kids on both sides of things, and, and I had the sports nut that would have been wanting to play. So, you know, he might be older now, but I, I lived it. And anybody that knew me then, my son played every single day of the week. So I do understand, and I'm trying. So let's move on. Sarah, anything else we need to decide?
The only other thing that I would like to do is when we work, do a committee, on the committee will be school direct, athletic directors, school administrator, district administrator, parents we will ask for. So I will send out something looking for a few parents participate, the school nurse, and then board members. So we're looking for two board members to potentially serve on that committee specific to creating the athletic guidance.
Can we have one from each viewpoint? To make it a balanced viewpoint?
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Matt, Aaron, Michelle, Yuquan. Anybody want to be on that committee? Barbara, I see you hiding behind a book. Thanks for the humor in this. Matt? Then TJ, Barbara. Matt or Aaron or Michelle, you know, one of you, sports guys. I look at sports guys for this.
I feel like Matt's a big soccer, soccer guy, so I'm okay with him.
I'm the baseball guy.
He's a baseball guy. Aaron's a soccer guy, really, if you want to get into it. But Aaron's now doing all sports, so. I don't know. Matt or Aaron, pick one, and then. Matt, you want to do it? Aaron, are you, do you want to do it or do you want Matt to do it? Okay. You two take a minute and come up with a consensus. And then Barbara, TJ, and I, hello, which one? Barb is working. TJ, are you sleeping or do you want to be on a committee?
It just depends on the time of day because I work midnight.
It's going to be during the day, TJ. It's going to be at probably after school or a Monday morning, right, Sarah?
Like, yes, likely on Monday morning. And then I imagine that they'll have a couple of meetings, but we'll have to find other times to do it as well. But yes, likely during the school day.
If it's during the school day, if you could do it at 9:00 AM for me. If not, Sue, you could, you can take it over because I'm going to need sleep.
Yeah, I don't mind doing it. I just want to make, offer it to everybody. Barbara already declined with the book in front of her face. Very cute, though.
Are these going to be in-person meetings or virtual meetings?
I don't know. Probably virtual.
If it's virtual, Sue, if it's in-person, I'll take it.
Okay.
I might leave the house, you never know. I went to a tour. Hey, I happen to have that child sick right now. This isn't funny. Matt and Aaron? Aaron, you're doing it? Got it. All right. I'll take it, TJ. You need to sleep. You're not very nice when you don't sleep. I, I like your family. If I can't make it, TJ can fill in. How about that? If it's something like that. Or if he's off. Okay. Move on. Meeting's too long. Sarah, do you have anything else that you need? Can someone send me the resolution that we need?
So we're not, we're not going to do that tonight, Sue, because we're going to have to also appoint coaches. So we're going to have to have a special board meeting towards the end of February.
Okay. For that meeting, can you just have cleared it with the insurance company and all the other questions that came up just for clarification?
Yes.
So that we have covered everything? I, I know it's, I know it's allowed, but this way we've actually gotten clarification. Right, Julie?
We'll have clarification and we'll have the committee work done before the board meeting so that the committee can present to the Board of Education on how the district will be moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. And we're all done? We can move on? That's it? We're good? Okay. Privilege of the floor. By the way, thank you. Before we move on to privilege of the floor, thank you to Mrs. LaRoche, Mr. Cron, Mr. Ferry, Rob Porus, anybody that added anything that you stayed on this meeting and listened to us. We appreciate it very much.
Yes, thank you.
Privilege of the floor. Please state, state your name, address, three minutes, and let's go. Does anybody have anything to say? Okay. Let's move on. 8.1, motion to approve the financial reports for January 2021 as presented at this meeting. Motion, please. Aaron, second. Barbara? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, TJ. 8.2, a motion to approve submission of real property tax cap compliance form as presented by Ann tonight. Motion, please. Aaron, second by Barbara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to approve the change order for MH heating and cooling gas, cooling as presented. A motion, please.
Motion.
Second. Matt, is that a second? Okay. Any discussion on this? We didn't really get to talk about much. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. A motion to approve Northeastern interior change order as presented. A motion, please.
Motion.
Thank you. Second by Matt. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Motion carries seven, zero. Eight point five, a motion to approve the agreement with Felon, Felonzer Engineering Smart Schools Bond Act as presented. A motion, please. Matt, uh, Erin, second by Barbara. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Motion to approve obsolete vehicle and reassign courier vehicle. Motion, please. Erin, a second. Matt? Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. A motion to approve the transfer to school lunch fund as presented. The transfers for $35,000, to be transparent. Uh, motion, Barbara, second.
Sue, can you just go a little bit further in depth of what it's for?
Sure, I will continue that. It is to, um, a mo, uh, it is a transfer funds to the school lunch fund to cover the increased cost of providing individually wrapped meals to students, including but not limited to food containers, individually wrapped utensils, forks, knives, spoons, napkins, all wrapped together in kits, individual handewaves, hot and cold thermos coolers, gloves, moving boxes to aid in the continuous prevention of the spread of COVID-19 and the amount of $35,000. Is that enough?
Perfect.
Um, and, and we did, we did have some, um, unbalanced transfer from last year to help with these unplanned expenses. So we are, it's what we need to do in order to meet the guidelines that we have. There we are, back with those guidelines. A motion. Okay, we've done it. Does anybody have anything to say? We're good? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero to transfer the funds. Um. A motion to appoint Deirdre Doughty as permanent daily sub as presented. Um, I believe it continues her extension to March 1st to March 15th. All in, uh. Erin, you have the motion. Thank you. Matt, was that a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? TJ?
I'm for it.
Are you in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, an opposed motion carries seven, zero. A motion to appoint Vanessa Villamil as permanent daily sub as presented. This extends her time from March 1st to March 31st. Uh, motion, please.
Hold on a second, Sue.
What?
I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. You said an opposed motion moves forward seven, zero?
No, no, you said, I asked all four, all opposed. Motion carried seven, zero, meaning it, it passed TJ.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. I was like, hold on a second.
Okay, a motion, no, we, we like her. We're not opposing her.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, got that. Thank you. And motion, we have the motion for the next sub. Erin, thank you. Matt's a second.
Is it just me?
No, I think she froze.
Okay.
Okay, now it's about, like, everybody froze for me for a second. Oh, no, I just see Jeffrey intently looking. I thought you were frozen, Jeffrey.
Um, Sue, if you can hear us, you're frozen and need to get, you know, you know what I'm going to do? I'm just going to kick you out. Oh, no, I can't. Then she can't.
A motion, I'll just do it. A motion and move forward. Everybody in favor?
But what number are we on?
This is for the second sub.
Okay.
Anybody opposed?
Okay.
Anybody opposed?
TJ, can you turn your camera on?
Yeah, hold on. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody opposed? Unmute and say no.
No.
Uh, motion moves forward six, zero. Sarah, can you read off the next slide?
Nine point three, approved leave of absence for Heinous. A motion to approve the leave of absence of Kate Heinous as presented.
Motion.
Erin?
Second.
Michelle, second. Anybody opposed?
Thank you TJ.
You got it. You can take it from here.
Sue, we're on nine point three Venus, uh, we're on the vote.
Thank you. Did everybody vote besides me? Yes, I vote. Anyone opposed? TJ, motion carries then?
Yep, seven, zero.
Okay, a motion to appoint, nope, we did, yes, a motion to appoint Deirdre Doughty as seventh grade ELA leave replacement as presented. Um, motion, please. Barbara, second, Michelle. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. A motion to appoint Kathy Castaldo and Cheryl Proll as eighth grade advisors as presented. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Barbara? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Michelle, you're not opposed, right? That was an aye?
I think I froze for you first.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. Um, motion carries seven, zero. A motion to appoint virtual club advisors as presented. Motion? Barbara, second. Matt? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. A motion to appoint Kelly Vici as substitute nurse as presented. Motion? Michelle, second. Barbara? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Motion to accept the CSC CPSE recommendations as presented for this meeting on the date of January 11th and January 25th. Motion, please. Matt, second. Michelle? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. We will be moving into an executive session. But first, our next board meeting, scheduled board meeting is March 15th at 7:00 PM. Um, no action will be taken after this meeting. So I would like a motion to enter into executive session based for negotiations conducted pursuant to the Taylor Law involving the Agreement with the Teachers Association and seeking legal advice from the school board attorney. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Barbara. Second. Michelle? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. I would like to thank everybody that stayed on for this entire evening. It's been fun. Um, stay safe, everybody. Bye.